Good morning again, everybody. It is now nearly 10:20 a.m. and we're still getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. We currently have five members present. Thank you Ms. Gruehl, Mr. Labange, Ms. Perry, and Ms. Zine for being here, but we do need ten members for a quorum. Will Mr. Carter... Good morning again, everybody. We do thank you for your patience and apologize for the delay. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall, welcome to council chambers, and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, October 31st, Halloween 2003. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. or as close to it as we can achieve a quorum. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is now 10:30 a.m. and we have seven members present, three shy of a quorum, but today being Friday, as is customary, we do have a number of special presentations and introductions to be made. I'd like to begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Gruehl.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm pleased to be here again on an issue near and dear to my heart, and if I could, I have both members from the street, I think it's Street Services that are here, come on up, Street Services, right? Yeah, come on up, the guys. And also my community members that are here, if you could come up as well. Now, I know last week I talked about pothole day, but there are never enough, not enough times to talk about how our community is committed to our neighborhoods and to beautifying our neighborhoods, the quality of life, which is so important to us. It is about our trees being trimmed, our streets being paved, and our neighborhoods participating with our city family in making it a better place. And today, I have representatives, and I promise I don't bite, come on up, come close. We have representatives both from our neighborhood councils and our street services that are present today to acknowledge them for their service. We don't often say thank you enough to our employees of the city of Los Angeles for doing their job, for doing it with a smile, for working with our neighborhoods. And our neighborhood councils, which are such a critical part of our communities, a critical part of dealing with quality of life issues, and I am so proud that my neighborhoods have said, "We're not just going to talk about the quality of life and improving those streets, we're actually going to go out with you and help identify some of the problems and help solve those problems." And so this summer, in the heat of the day, I think it was over 100 degrees that Saturday that we were in the San Fernando Valley, that people went out and identified those potholes for us. And we've worked with the neighborhood councils also on graffiti day, on bulky item day, in educating people about our 311 number, but we need the community to help us achieve our goals. So I wanted to, and I have numerous certificates, and I won't give all of the presentations today, we'll do a picture in the back, but wanted to acknowledge the representatives that are here today. that are here today who have made my community a special place and one in which we care about our streets and trees, et cetera. So if I could, I just want to identify real quick from our neighborhood councils. We have David Hernandez and Eric Friedner from the Northeast, North Hollywood Neighborhood Council, Polly Ward from the Studio City Neighborhood Council. We have Lori Levine and Michael Roy from our Valley Glen Community Council. And if we could, give them a great round of applause. This is our important neighborhood councils that are giving back. You can see up on the camera there, there are pictures from our Pothole Day as Bill Robertson and I are telling people where they need to go to fill those potholes and what a pothole looks like and describing it. So I want to also thank Bill for all of his hard work. Also with us today as well, you'll see our hard-working city workers, Don McKay, Anthony Flores, Hector Nunez, Danny McDaniels, Steve Snell, Joe Ponce, Miguel Gomez, Donnie Roberson, Edward Cortezar, and Joaquin Villanueva, who are dedicated city employees. Let's give them a great round of applause as well. And if any of you would like to have some of your neighborhood councils trained by my experienced pothole identifiers, we'd be more than happy to do that. Thank you so very much. I don't know if there's anyone from Street Services that'd like to say a word or one of my neighborhood council representatives that are here. You're all turning behind. Yes, please, come in, and then Polly.
Good morning, members of the City Council and Councilwoman Wendy Gruel. I'd like to thank the council for taking the time to honor these gentlemen for the hard work that they do day in and day out maintaining the communities. They really get a thankless, it's a thankless job they do, and I really appreciate the time that you take to honor these people. I'd also like to thank our directors, Mr. Robertson, Mr. Thomas, and Mr. Sausida for their fine leadership and dedication to the Bureau. It makes it a pleasure to work under their leadership and I'd really like to thank everybody here and these fine gentlemen for the work they do day in and day out. Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of our Neighborhood Council, Studio City Neighborhood Council, we'd like to thank Wendy Gruel for all the work. She is everywhere, she is constantly there, working for us. Wendy, thank you.
Good morning, thank you. And from the North Hollywood Northeast Neighborhood Council, and that particular area in the San Fernando Valley is one of the poorest and depressed areas, and I really want to thank our council members for taking such an interest in that community and starting with the potholes and the trash cleanup, that establishes a sense of pride for that community. So once again, I want to thank Wendy, and she also looks very good on a horse.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Colleagues, before proceeding to the next presentation, we do have a quorum I'd like to dispense with consent to items. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas Garcetti, Gruel, Han Labange, Ludlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry Reyes, Smith, V. Regosa, Weiss, Zine Padilla, 13 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Ludlow moves, Mr. Zine seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Garcetti moves, and Mr. Cardenas seconds.
On the regular agenda, Items 1 and 2 are items noted for public hearings. They're both public convenience or necessities in Council District 3 and Council District 11. The recommendation is to grant the application. A motion is required.
Okay, colleagues, Items 1 and 2 now before us, items in Council Districts 3 and 11. Do we have any requests for specials or motions on these two items?
One special.
One called special by Mr. Zine, Mr. Reyes?
Five special, please.
Okay, we're almost there. 1 and 2 are currently before us. Let me also announce that we do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and public hearings are closed. Item 1 has been called special by Mr. Zine. Is there anybody wishing to call item number 2 special? Ms. Perry, did you wish to be recognized? Okay. Item number 2 is currently before us. Any requests for special? If not, we do need a motion. It's actually an item in Councilmember Miskowski's district, and she has yet to arrive. Clerk, do we expect her today?
No, Ms. Miskowski is excused for today.
Do we have a time limit on this file?
The time limit is November 7th, excuse me, November 14th. Council, you can continue it to Tuesday if you wish.
Okay, without objection, then let's continue this to Tuesday, which would be November 4th, and hear from Ms. Miskowski by then. Next items, please.
Items for which public hearings have been held, Items 3 through 24, Items 4 through 7 are commissioners. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Let's hold those on the desk. Colleagues, Items 3 through 24 now before us. These items have had public hearings in committee. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearing. Mr. Reyes called item number 5 special. Mr. Cardenas?
I'd like to take the opportunity to pull back item 15 back to the Commerce Committee, which we heard at the next availability.
Members request to refer item 15 to the Commerce Committee. Is there any objection? Seeing none, item 15 is so referred. Ms. Perry?
Send 8 forthwith once it passes.
Okay. Any other specials? Any other specials with the exception of Items 4 through 7? And item 5 called special. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Mr. Labange?
Yeah, Mr. President. Number 9, forthwith, please.
Forthwith on number 9. Next items, please.
Items 25 through 40 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, these items shall be before us today. Items 25 through 40, colleagues, are now before us. I do have cards on Items 26, 27, 28, 30, and 35. We'll call those special. On the balance of the items, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open and closed on those matters. Any specials? Any specials on Items 25 through 40? Any specials? Mr. Ludlow?
You already did 20 through 21. I wanted forthwith on 21.
Okay, we'll send item 21 forthwith. On Items 25 through 40, with the exception of items called special, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Forthwith on 25, please. Next item.
On the continuation agenda, item number 1 is a motion and a substitute motion, and the substitute motion is Perry Miskowski, and those were continued from Wednesday's meeting. Public hearing has not been held.
Okay, colleagues, item 41 is currently before us, and I do have a card on item 41. Let's call that special. And Madam Clerk, if this is the end of the regular meeting agenda, I do believe it has passed the time for our special meeting agenda. Let's temporarily recess the regular meeting, and would you please call the roll on the special meeting?
Cardenas Garcetti, Gruel, Han Labange, Ludlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, V. Regosa, Weiss, Zine Padilla, 13 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The special meeting is officially in session. We do have one item. Is there any request for specials on item number 1 of the special meeting agenda? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Mr. President, there's a problem on the special agenda is not coming up on the computer. I'll need to call a voice vote on that one.
Okay, please call, read the item and call for a voice vote.
The item before council is a communication from the CRA and ordinances relative to extending dates of effectiveness, and the role Cardenas Garcetti, Gruel, Han, Labange, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, V. Regosa, Weiss, Zine Padilla. And that would be 13 ayes.
Okay, that item is approved. Forthwith on that item, and this concludes the special meeting agenda. Let us now adjourn the special meeting, return to the regular meeting. Are there any items remaining other than items called special?
No, Mr. President, only the items called special.
Okay, let's return then to the presentation segment of our agenda, and let me call upon Councilmember Labange.
Mr. President, good morning. Today, we're saluting Robert Fawcett for his nearly 30 years of service to the City of Los Angeles and the Department of Recreation and Parks. He's being joined by his wonderful family here and also some members of the department staff. Bob Fawcett began his career in the department in 1974, and he also worked with our Bureau of Engineering. But he got back to where it really is exciting, and that's the Department of Recreation and Parks. And he did many projects throughout the city, including in several districts throughout, including the beautiful project at the historic Lemur Park, Penmar Park, Harbor, in the Harbor area, did many work in the parks, in the Wilson Harding Golf Courses, and also the development of the beautiful Lake Balboa Complex. He also was commended for his work, and this is a real wonderful thing that Bob did, on the old zoo area. Any of you who are old Angelinos remember the old zoo near the merry-go-round? And when it was closed in 1965, it was left dormant. And Bob and his team put together a wonderful plan to keep the historic exhibits that are fixtures into the hills of Griffith Park, but make it an absolutely wonderful picnic area. Truly a remarkable piece of work. He was promoted to superintendent of planning and development for the department. Worked very closely, Mr. Padilla, on the Hanson Dam Matters with the Coming Children's Museum. He also helped out on a lot of significant projects in beautiful Elysian Park, Gray Simon's Lodge, the old lodge, the Bishop Canyons, the old landfill that was for many years just an unsited area in Elysian Park. In the center field, if you were sitting at Dodger Stadium, you look out to Elysian Park, you saw Bishop Canyon. Bob and his team re-landscaped and redesigned that, including also in Elysian Park, Point Grand View, Radio Hill, and Broadway Hill. And also worked with the great Echo Park artist, Peter Shire, on his work in Elysian Park. Bob carries with him a great sense of adventure. He has great qualities of dedication and focus, which is very important for the Department of Recreation and Parks. He has a great sense of humor. If you know him, after he smiles after a little bit, and everybody laughing behind me. But he loves landscaping and architecture, and he contributed greatly to the City of Los Angeles. At this time, I would like to ask that we join and salute Robert Fawcett for his 30 years of service to the City of Los Angeles as a prime mover of creating great spaces in our public parks. Please, let's all salute Robert Fawcett on his retirement from the Department of Recreation and Parks.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just remember, and I didn't know Bob, you were retiring, so I just want to commend you on your years of service to the city. As a chief deputy for former councilman, on many occasions, I had the opportunity to go to Bob and say, "I got this problem, that problem, I want to see this project move along." And Bob was always a gentleman, said, "I'll do what I can to help you," and always came back with great recommendations. And I look over the projects you've done, and I think it was probably a pleasure for you to do some of those projects, because they're really big projects that benefit so many people in the City of L.A. But I always enjoyed working with you. You're a gentleman to work with. You always saw things got done in my district and my predecessor's district. And on behalf of at least the resident of the 12th District, I thank you for your service to the city, and I'm really sorry to see you leaving us. But good luck to you in your retirement, and thank you for all you've done. Thank you.
Robert, please introduce your wonderful family, and also you're blessed with a good team of support from Recreation and Parks. But Bob, please introduce them all for us.
This is my wife, Maryline, my son Jeff, and my daughter Laura. She did work here in children, youth, and families. You might recognize her face. And this is my wonderful staff from Planning and Construction Division, who tirelessly make parks for the citizens of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Give us some advice in tough times. What do we do?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Zine for our next presentation.
All of them come right here.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, it's my honor and pleasure to introduce to you and to sadly say farewell to a good friend who I've known for a couple of years, who's been a really good friend to the City of Los Angeles and to me in particular. He's the Ambassador Director General Taipei Economic and Cultural Office in Los Angeles, Ambassador Jason C. Yuan. If you'll please join me. Jason Yuan. Jason was born in China. He is married to Margaret and two children, Billy and Alice. And his distinguished career, many honors. He attended the Chinese Naval Academy in Taiwan, attended other universities, Southwestern University in Washington, D.C., where he received a master's degree in business and public administration, U.S. National Security Management Certificate from the United States, National Defense University in Washington, D.C. And the career has been distinguished. Naval Attache, Assistant Naval Attache, Embassy of the Republic of China in the United States, Senior Staff, Congressional Liaison Division, Coordination Counsel for North American Affairs, United States, Deputy Director, Congressional Liaison Division, Coordinating Counsel for North American Affairs Office in the United States, Director, Congressional Liaison Division, Coordinating Counsel for North American Affairs, 1986 to 1991, Director General, Department of North American Affairs, Ministry of Foreign Affairs, Republic of China, Representative, Taipei Economic and Cultural Office in Canada from 1994 to 1996, and 1996 to 1998 Ambassador, Embassy of the Republic of China in Panama, and 1998 to the present time Director General, Taipei Economic and Cultural Office in the City of Los Angeles. I, along with many of my elected officials, attended a number of affairs where the ambassador has received us. The most recent was at the Sheraton Hotel with a large assembly of people. It was a wonderful, wonderful evening, and that was the second year I've attended. And it's sadly that the ambassador is leaving to go home. And we don't want him to go home. I told him we're going to put handcuffs on him and keep him here, because he's been such a wonderful friend and a real business relationship with the City of Los Angeles and all of our neighboring communities. The event at the Sheraton had hundreds of elected officials recognizing ambassador for the wonderful work he has done. And I wanted to bring him down to City Council and do an official seal of the City of Los Angeles that the ambassador can take back and hopefully put on his wall with his lovely wife, Margaret, and remember that the people of Los Angeles love all that he has done. And this is to you, Ambassador, in recognition of your dedicated efforts and accomplishments, which have been of great value to the City of Los Angeles. Thank you for your outstanding commitment, and this is for you to always remember us in the City of Los Angeles, Ambassador. You're welcome. And now, I know you're familiar with the microphone and speaking, and the floor is yours, Mr. Ambassador.
Dennis, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. Being representing my country here in Los Angeles for five years is really an honor, because usually, as a foreign service people, we go to place from one to three years. But since Los Angeles is such a nice place, particularly, we not only serve, deal with our mainstream friends, but also serve with the Chinese community. We have more than half million Chinese-Americans here in Los Angeles area, and they are very active here in Los Angeles, particularly, they work very closely to City Council. Various occasions, I have the honor to meet all members here in different kind of events, and they all very support to those new, new or old immigrants. And we really appreciate what City Council did and do to the community. But also, I'd like to say that I'm very proud to know that Taipei, our city... But also, I'd like to say that I am very proud to know that Taipei, our city in Taiwan, and Los Angeles are sister cities for many years. And here, before leaving, after serving five years in Los Angeles, once I get back to Taipei, serving at the Ministry of Foreign Affairs, I wanted to extend the invitation to all City Council members. Whenever you have time to come back to Taipei to visit, I want to do something to show our reciprocity, and I'd like to take you to our City Council, particularly about three million people, vis-à-vis three million people here. I hope between Los Angeles and Taipei, we have more exchange, not only City Council members, but all ladies and gentlemen here in this room. You are welcome to visit Taipei. Thank you very much for this honor.
Mr. Labange.
Good luck.
Thank you very much, Tom.
And also, I'm pleased that you live in the 4th District now, in the Hollywood Hills, and your successor will. So if you ever have a problem with the streetlight, just leave that card, I'll be happy to get it fixed.
Thank you very much.
Chez Chez.
Mr. Reyes for our next presentation. Let's proceed then to Ms. Hahn, presentation.
Come on up. I want to invite Councilman Reyes to begin this presentation, since this landmark restaurant is actually in Ed's district, and he wants to be the one that starts his presentation out.
Well, first, I want to thank Janice for bringing this to the floor. I know Felipe is one of those landmarks. We talk about a presence, and we talk about the history of Los Angeles. When I was speaking to her earlier, she's saying, "You know, Ed, this is a treasure for everyone," and that's why I felt compelled to do this. And I just shared with her, "Well, look, Jan, I'd hate to show up at Felipe's, and he might ask me, 'Why didn't you do this?'" And bottom line is, we both went to the services to get a certificate, and thanks to Janice, she got everyone's signature. And of course, this gets a priority, to get each one of you to show your support for Felipe the Original, home of the original French dip sandwiches. If you go to Felipe's, you will find historic pictures on how this city has evolved. And it's always great to hear about the American story and how you have an immigrant coming to Los Angeles, starting out an eatery, having a family take it over, basically build from the riches of the original recipes, and actually make tons of money from it. And for that, we acknowledge them for their presence, their history, their contribution to the folklore of Los Angeles. I want to thank my colleague, Janice Hahn, making sure that everyone in the council signs the certificate. Thank you very much, and congratulations to you.
Thanks, Mr. President. Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you, Councilmen. President colleagues, I, as Ed said, was so enthusiastic and was so excited about honoring what I think is one of Los Angeles' most known, certainly worldwide, and beloved institutions, Felipe's the Original, home of the original French dip sandwich. To most of us, really growing up in Los Angeles, it seems like Felipe's has been always a part of Los Angeles, and we honor them today for ninety-five years of business. I literally grew up eating Felipe's French dip sandwiches. In fact, I would be willing to bet, I don't know if Tom would beat me on this, but I would be willing to bet that I probably consumed more French dip sandwiches than anyone on this City Council. My father took me there from the time I was old enough to really begin eating, and it was really one of Kenny Hahn's favorite restaurants. And we would take every opportunity to go there, whether it was before a Dodger game or whatever we were doing downtown. My dad, many years, had Felipe's sandwiches brought into the County Hall of Administration to serve him and his staff. I've done the same thing here. My staff has gone over there many days for lunch. And I recall the last celebration, anniversary, where my father and my children and my mother were at the restaurant honoring you. I forget what year that was, that we were all there. But I believe it was one of the last public celebrations my father was involved in before he passed on. Felipe Matthew opened his first French deli at Sixth and Alameda Streets in 1903. Then in 1908, he launched his first Felipe the Original at Third and Alameda Streets. And in 1918, the restaurant moved back to Eliso Street, where the Felipe the Original French Dip Sandwich was created, thanks to a Los Angeles firefighter who dipped his sandwich in the odd juice. Mr. Matthew served his last French dip in 1927 and sold his restaurant to three brothers, Frank, Harry, and David Martin. Then in 1955, Frank Martin, the surviving brother, was joined in business by his son-in-law, Bill Bender, who has since retired. Bill's son, John and Richard Bender, currently run the restaurant, and we have Bill, Richard, and John all with us here this morning. Gentlemen, congratulations on ninety-five years. I must say, you all look very good for ninety-five. And thank you for being really one of the most beloved institutions in Los Angeles. And which one of you is gonna speak?
Let's also hear from Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, I thank you. I just remember as a child riding my bicycle over to the Glendale train station, and the clerk telling me, "You gotta take the train downtown and cross the tracks, you get the greatest coleslaw in the world at Felipe's." And then I remember when I was in high school, Burr Hickman was my English teacher, who truly helped me learn how to construct a sentence. And one of the stories we had to write about Los Angeles is Felipe's. We went there, and it was seventy-five cents for that. I can't tell you how many times I've enjoyed it. My best times at Felipe's is when I don't get lunch during the day, and I go there around three in the afternoon, and it's kind of has that change. And it's so interesting. And Ed, as you know, in your district, how diverse it is, and it's the crossroads of the world at Alameda and Ord. But what I really like is I like people who run businesses and have great business, and then they clean their sidewalks. And I can't tell you how many times I've come down the street and seen Richard himself right here cleaning his sidewalk. So I'm proud of you as a member of council and as a connoisseur of the finest French dip sandwich in the world. And I also would say, if he was here today, I'm sure Hugh Howser would congratulate you for all that he's done, because every time Hugh does a story about Felipe's, their business goes up eighty-five percent.
Well, Mr. President, Councilman Labange, thanks for the good words. It's, you know, just thirty-five years of hard work. We've got some of our kids now that we're starting to get involved in the business, so, you know, when we grow old and gray, they'll be able to take over. So hopefully, we can continue it on. Thank you for the recognition.
Yeah, only a point of information, Janice. You said it was a Los Angeles fireman that dipped the sandwich.
That's according to the legend.
Okay, I thought it was a policeman, but tell me I'm wrong.
All right, who wants to settle?
Now, here it is. Let's get it settled.
Okay, you gotta make us both look good in this answer.
I'd like to address that a little bit.
Yes, go ahead.
I have heard that story for the last fifty years, and you know, I still have my doubts about the whole thing. But nevertheless, it was a good story, and the gravy is still just as good as it was the first time it fell in. So that's the important thing.
That's a good story.
But it is simply amazing to me that a little restaurant such as ours can get this recognition. And we want to thank you very, very much, and all of the visitors, all the councilmen, President Padilla up there. I imagine he's been here, been there as well. And I hope that you will always come and enjoy it while we're still here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Let's get a picture.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. For our next presentation, let me call upon Councilmember Garcetti. He's not quite ready. Ms. Perry.
Solidad. Come on up. Come on, come close. You could put your visitor's passes on your hip or something, so it makes for a better picture. Come on, don't be shy. Come close. Come in front. Come close, come on. Come step up here. See me be close. See me be on TV. Okay. Everybody? Okay, great. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. President. I am excited to have representatives here from the SEA Charter School in the 9th Council District here with us today. This is Solidad Enrichment Action Charter School. The SEA Charter School, located at 1037 East 34th Street, was the first property purchased by Solidad Enrichment Action, Inc. When it was acquired in 1993, the site housed the SEA, SEA, Inc. Parents Helping Parents Twenty Week Parenting Course, a computer lab, and extracurricular activities for the students who were then attending the alternative school, which was housed in the nearby St. Patrick's Church. Today, the site is the home of the South Central SEA Charter School. It has two classrooms with approximately forty-five students enrolled. Each classroom has a credentialed teacher and teacher's aide. The school provides six hours of academic instruction per day, with a supervised two-hour-after-school program, which provides tutoring, counseling, and recreation. The site participates in the Social Service International Program, which connects students from the charter school with students in other countries throughout the world. Students may interact with one another, find out about each other's lives, and speak about their issues, interests, and concern. In addition, the students at this school receive a comprehensive set of wraparound services, including career development, training, placement, leadership development, counseling regarding teen pregnancy prevention, computer training, and parenting classes for each student's parent. This is a very special place and a true gem in the 9th Council District, and I am excited to present to you today Cesar Calderon, Chief Operations Officer, Virginia Lopez, a concerned parent, John Clayton, the Coordinator of Charter People's Service Support, Christina Duran, Principal of the Southwest Region, and Alfonso Castañeda, Regional Supervisor of the South Central Region. So I want to say welcome, and then invite the principal up to the podium to just say a few words. Thank you.
Good morning. On behalf of Brother Modesto Leon and the mothers who thirty-four years ago met at the basement of Solidar Church to start this program, who works with the high-risk youth in the community, I want to thank Councilwoman Perry for this certificate of recognition. We are very proud of this, that, to know that someone remembers us out there. Our board member, Percy Duran, is here too, and some of the students. So I'm gonna let our principal, Christina Duran, to introduce the rest of the staff.
I want to thank you all for this incredible honor. Our students will introduce themselves. Thank you so much, and we continue to look for your support in our, in providing services and education to these students. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Good morning, and my name is Astro Gano.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. My name is Susanna Leon, and I'm in 12th grade, and I'm here representing SEA Norwax, SEA South Central.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. My name is Luis Rodriguez, and I'm in 11th grade.
I also want to recognize, I don't want to say an old friend, but a longtime friend to City Hall, and have him say a few words, because he's a friend to so many people in this building.
President Padilla and City Councilmen, those of us who grew up in East Los Angeles and are still suffering the fifty percent dropout rate in East Los Angeles, I put Brother Modesto with Cesar Chavez, Bert Corona, and the other community leaders in our community. And I thank you for recognizing the great work that he's doing and will continue to do. Thank you very much. Percy Durant, on behalf of Brother, thank you.
Mr. Zine for a quick introduction.
Mr. President and colleagues, I'd like to introduce senior friends, West Hills Hospital senior friends. If you'll please stand. They're here for a tour. And good morning to you all. Welcome to Los Angeles City Hall. Find people from the West San Fernando Valley. I know it was a lovely trip, and you've got some other activities you're gonna see. We're gonna be taking you up to the tower to see the tower, and then some other activities here in City Hall. Lenore, mechanic, the trip coordinator, tour of City Hall, fifty-five members of senior friends, West Hills Hospital, social group, that also volunteers and visits individual at the hospital. So we want to welcome you to City Hall. Thank you for coming down and spending some time with us. Congratulations, and have a wonderful day. And don't go too far, because I want to get a picture with you folks before you leave. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for honoring us, Mr. Zine.
Did you have anything else to say quickly, Laura?
No, I said, "Thank you for honoring us."
You're very welcome, and thank you for coming down. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. For our next presentation, let me call upon Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to ask all of the guests from Defisaal to come join me this morning. It's an honor, Mr. President, to be able to give recognition to activists from the community, the Salvadoran community, who took part in the commemoration of Salvadoran Independence Day. The Defisaal Festival de Independencia Salvadoranía took place on Sunday, August 31st, to commemorate the 182nd year of Salvadoran independence. And it gave me great joy to be able to help and to have this parade and this commemoration in the district, in the 13th district, especially having just come back from El Salvador with so many other city representatives and pushing forward the sister city arrangement with San Salvador, which we're very excited about as well. So I'd like to recognize the volunteers. I'm gonna name all of them, and then I have certificates for those who were able to make it here today. Let me just name them today. Norma Roque, Albert Vialta, the AC Flying Club, Claudia Melgar, Sonia Vialta, the Hollywood Police Activity League, which was great in providing a lot of the activities and events at the festival, Naxal, Dax Vialta, Alex Maida, Jeffrey Maida, Comunidades Chula, Santa Monica Middle School, Casa de la Cultura, Nelson Canizales, Elmer Alvarez, Nacho Lopez, Jaime La Chilona, sorry, Rodriguez, who was the grand marshal, Sylvia Gil, and Patricia Viatoro. And today, I have for, starting with Patricia, a certificate of appreciation for your support on our first Defisaal Festival de Independencia Salvadoranía today on October 31st. Muchisimas gracias. To Sonia Vialta, for your leadership as well. We want to thank you from the community and from the council office. And for Naxal, for your support as well for the festival. And Sylvia. Sylvia Gil, congratulations as well. And those are the ones we have today, but we have certificates for everybody. I wanted to thank you, and maybe have the opportunity for somebody to say a couple of words. Roy?
Hi, how are you? Thank you, Eric. In the name of the Salvadoran community, we want to say thank you to you and to everybody who helped us to celebrate the independency of El Salvador. That was the fisting of September. So thank you very much. And I know people from, oh, Hector, please.
In behalf of the Defisaal, we want to say thank you to Councilman Eric Garcetti for his support. his support. Thank you, and we expect double next year.
Absolutely. And we really have the strongest Salvadoran community outside of El Salvador here in Los Angeles. It is a great joy to welcome this event. We look forward to next years as well, bringing all the community together and making sure that we can not only push forward with the celebrations here, but next year we will be celebrating making San Salvador our sister city, and it will be a great, great year. So we're looking forward next year to having that celebration together. So thank you very much, Mr. President, and I believe Mr. Cardenas has something he'd like to say as well. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. I think what you're doing today is an enlightening and responsible thing to remind all of us that Salvadoranos here in Los Angeles are contributing all over Los Angeles. They're in the San Fernando Valley, they have a good and wonderful presence, they're part of the fabric of our community, and they're contributing just like every person in this community does. And it's important for us to remember when we celebrate Independence Day of people who come from other countries, all we're doing is saying, "We appreciate you, and we know that you love your country," but at the same time, the way you respect this country when you're here is you love this country too, and you appreciate the opportunities that you have. That's what I see when we celebrate Independence Day for so many countries right here in Los Angeles, is that we're a wonderful city, we're a wonderful country, and people come here, and they really, really enjoy and love this country. Although they enjoy and love their country as well, they love both. So thank you for doing this today and making sure we remember this wonderful day.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas, and I'm sure as a fellow Mexican-American, you can praise the Salvadorans for making that decision not to become part of southern Mexico, but going their own route 182 years ago. So felicidades, and we'll look forward to next year. Adelante.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
One other presentation, Mr. President, and colleagues. It's with great sadness and much happiness over the last two years that I bid farewell to somebody who has been an integral part of the CD-13 team. Mr. Cheeto Tenza, who is joined here today by his family, please, and friends, was somebody who I met as a candidate at a Silver Lake Chamber of Commerce cocktail mixer, somebody who had been active in his community, had been active in politics in Florida, was looking to get involved in Los Angeles, and we formed a quick and very strong friendship. Through his good work and that of others, of course, I made it here to have the opportunity to represent not only him, but all the residents of CD-13. And I asked Cheeto to join the team, to take some time off. He was a businessman, still is a businessman, to take some time off from his computer consulting business to try to make history in CD-13. Cheeto led the project which created Historic Filipino Town, something which the Filipino community, now the largest Asian-American group in Los Angeles and in the United States, had for too many decades hoped for but had not been met. It was through Cheeto's leadership that we were able to bring together the community, put aside past rivalries, and working together, Cheeto and George Villanueva from my staff at the time, were able to do just what I said, make history. And Cheeto, every single time we pass the signs which designate Historic Filipino Town, I think of your efforts, and I think of you, and of the things that you have done to not only give pride to Filipinos who live in Los Angeles, but to all Angelinos who are proud of our heritage, our multicultural heritage. And it has been a great joy, I know, for the entire CD-13 team to have you as a part of this for the last two years. Cheeto also formed the first Historic Filipino Town Chamber of Commerce and is currently the president of it, and we will look forward to his leadership and continuing leadership. And Cheeto, I'm going to be turning to you all the time as a trusted advisor on issues in Filipino Town. We hardly can make a step without drawing on your wisdom, and your network within Historic Filipino Town has been such an important addition to City Hall and to all the initiatives that we've done here. It's been great joy getting to know Cora as well, who teaches right there in CD-13, Mayberry Elementary School, knowing that you live there in CD-13 and the border of Echo Park and Silver Lake. And so we are not saying farewell, we are saying goodbye today. We are thanking you for the incredible service that you have given, and I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, not only for making history, but for allowing me to be a part of it alongside you. So, Cheeto, thank you for your service. And now, Cheeto Tenza.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Garcetti. Thank you for those nice words, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to be of service to your constituents and particularly to the Filipino-American community. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for having me here, and thank you very much for this great honor. For two years, I've been honored and privileged to be a member of Councilman Garcetti's team and help him fulfill some of his campaign promises, particularly on the issues of supporting the establishment of a Filipino town, doing business outreach for minorities so that they could gain knowledge and understanding of the process of doing business with a city, and the establishment of a memorial as a tribute to the Philippine-American World War II veterans. On behalf of the Filipino-American community and the Filipino people, I would like to thank Mayor Han, President Padilla, and all the members of the City Council for their wholehearted support of Councilmember Garcetti's efforts to establish the first Filipino town, the first official Filipino town, historic Filipino town. And I hope that you would continue to support its development, continue to support the minority business owners, not only in participating with the city, but also in obtaining contracts in a much easier way. And I would also like you to support what we have started for the Filipino-American veterans, to establish a memorial so that these people, these brave people who fought side by side with the Americans, and to help preserve and maintain the freedom and liberty that we continue to enjoy. And finally, I ask the Filipino-American community to face the challenges before us today and contribute more to the shaping of this great city of Los Angeles. I will, on my part, continue to support the development of Historic Filipino Town. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and mabuhay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. For our final presentation, let me call upon Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm here today to honor not only a young man that's been a mainstay in community activities, but a person that represents his community quite well. Kevin Call is the president of the Federation of Indo-American Association of Southern California. And we're here today because the Indo-American community is celebrating their New Year, and it's an activity that goes each year between the months of October and November, with the date of October 25th being the actual holiday of New Years. This celebration, which is considered the Festival of Lights, is celebrated in a variety of countries throughout the world. And just to name a few, in Fiji, Malaysia, Nepal, Singapore, Sri Lanka, Trinidad, just a few of the countries in which the Diwali is being celebrated. And I'd like to, in behalf of the City Council, to declare that October 25th is a Diwali Day in the city of Los Angeles, and extend our best wishes and every success, and just to thank Kevin for all the things he does to bring all of our communities together. And just recently, I was a guest of his out in Cerritos, where several thousand Indo-Americans were there to celebrate a variety of activities and functions, but it's really a growing community within the city of Los Angeles, and really a community that's becoming very, very politically active and socially active. Just like to ask Kevin to come up and make some comments.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Honorable President of the Council, Mr. Padilla, honorable councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen. I really appreciate what Councilmember Mr. Parks has done for the Hindus all over the world, which represents 900 million people. And this Happy New Year Day and history in the making in the city of angels is going to be highly appreciated by Hindus all over the worlds. Thank you very much, sir. And lastly, I would request, since our Indo-American media is here also, and this news going all over the world, especially to India, representing 1.3 million people, I would request all the councilmembers to join for a group picture for this honorable occasion. Thank you very much. And my associate, another community leader, Mr. Pradeep Bagarwal, would like to also speak a few words.
President Padilla, honorable councilmember, and especially Councilman Parks, thank you very much. On behalf of Indian community, I really want to thank you for taking this step in declaring Diwali as the Indian New Year. By taking this step, you have truly shown that Los Angeles being the melting pot of this nation. By declaring this as a new year, you have taken a very big step in melting the Indian community into the main media. Thank you very much, and especially Councilman Parks for that.
Let's hear from Councilmember Cardenas.
Once again, here's a perfect example of exemplifying how wonderful and how vast and how intricate our city is. And also, I'd like to say, having been an engineer designing computers, when I was in college, I noticed there were a lot of Indo-Americans who were there in class with me, and quite frankly, I'd just like to point out that this is a community that has given vastly and is a driving force when it comes to our modern computer age, not only around the world, but right here in Los Angeles, in California. When you look at all of the major corporations who are involved in this wonderful, growing industry that is really changing our lives, this community has actually been a big part of that and being innovative about it as well. So I just wanted to say once again, another example of a community that contributes to all of what makes us good here in Los Angeles, and congratulations on your new year. And one of the wonderful things about celebrating New Years from different cultures is you know how people wait until the new year to start getting in shape or do it. Well, you can take a new year pretty much any part of the year and then start your life over again. So here's another opportunity. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas.
Mr. Zine.
Councilman Cardenas, you have spoken today what the world has known for many, many years, that Indian-Americans, they make the computer world run. Thank you very much.
I just have a couple of comments. Sunday, I was at the temple on Roscoe Boulevard in my district, was welcomed by the people and participated in the activities, the New Year activities. A wonderful turnout of the community, law-abiding, wonderful, hard-working people of the community. I want to commend Councilman Parks for recognizing today, to compliment you. But it's interesting that we recognized the ambassador of Taipei earlier, recognizing your community now. We recognize all the communities, and that's what's so unique about this city and so unique about this beautiful United States of America. We all come together, work together, live together for the prosperity and the freedoms that we enjoy. So thank you for being here, and Happy New Year to you and all the people that are of your ethnicity. And I'm telling you, I had a wonderful time there Sunday at the celebration. So congratulations and best wishes.
Councilman Zine, I hope you enjoyed the food and hope to see you again there.
I will be back there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Parks. Members, this concludes the presentation segment of today's agenda. Let's now turn to the matter remaining before us. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
There are commissioners before the council. Item number four is confirmation of Mr. John Jones through the Commission on Disability.
Okay, if you can come forward at this time. Colleagues, item number four is now before us. Public hearing has been held on this item. We do have a committee report recommending approval. Do we have members of the council wishing to make any statements or pose some questions at this time? Mr. Zine.
From the San Fernando Valley, from my district, you work in the educational environment, and you'll be a wonderful asset to this commission, and I just want to welcome you aboard. The mayor's made another wonderful selection, and the fact you live in my district even makes it better.
Thank you, Councilman Zine. I appreciate that. And thank you, Councilmen, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate this appointment. And Mayor Han, I look forward to this great opportunity.
And you know, you work for free.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other members wishing to be heard? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Congratulations, you're confirmed.
Thank you, Councilman Padilla.
Thank you for your service to the city.
Have a good day.
Forthwith, please. Next item.
Item number six is a confirmation of Mr. Michael Fleming to the East LA APC, and the Plumb Report has been submitted recommending approval.
Colleagues, item number six now before us. Members wishing to be heard, beginning with Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. We had the pleasure of speaking with Mr. Fleming, and we had a little dialogue. What impressed me is his background with the media, his professionalism in dealing with the whole issue of how you communicate in this very sophisticated world we have today. And I thought it was great to have someone who would be able to work in planning on land use issues from the Silver Lake area, in the APC, in the east side. And it gives us an added advantage in how we start speaking to the notion of image, and how positive we can be, how we can polish all those jewels we have, all those great architectural structures, all these historic commercial corridors. And there's a lot to celebrate, especially in light of the new parks that are coming online, and all the different infrastructure improvements that are occurring. So, Mr. Fleming, I want to thank you for your good service, for your support, and look forward to working with you in your capacity as APC Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
I encourage an high vote.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Fleming, I took the opportunity to embarrass you as much as I could at our hearing the other day in Mr. Reyes's committee, so let me just say, I meant it then, and you're going to be a fantastic commissioner. The city is very lucky to have you. And as I mentioned to some of the other folks who appeared before us in committee the other day, you're sitting in a quasi-judicial, quasi-appellate capacity. Not everyone who appears in front of you is going to understand that, and there are going to be lots of heated emotions on both sides of the issues that are presented before you for a decision. Knowing you as well as I do, I have 110% confidence that you're going to do it the right way, and that the people who appear in front of you, whether or not they agree with your ultimate decision, every single one of them will walk out of that room knowing they got a fair shake. Thank you for your service, Mr. Fleming.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Zine, Mr. Garcetti, who are you?
Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Zine, seat. Thank you very much, Mr. President. And Michael, congratulations on this nomination. I was very pleased to be able to recommend this nomination, and I praise all the powers that beef with their infinite wisdom in forwarding the nomination. I urge you, colleagues, to support this nomination today of Mr. Fleming. Michael first wrote me again as a candidate, I think, a few years ago, and somebody who was for a while a resident of CD-13. Unfortunately, with redistricting, we've lost him, but we still consider him ours in many ways, but somebody who has been a voice on so many issues, but whether it's equal rights, whether it's transportation. You are taking probably the most challenging job of any of the commissions in the city. And I don't say this lightly, I know the police commission is maybe arguably more work, but in terms of the vice that you're put between when you have one side and another, I have no doubt that you will rise the occasion, and I think your household has pretty good judicial temperament in general, so we should be okay. And I don't hold your friendship with my chief of staff against you whatsoever in my vote today. I urge my colleagues to support it, and I just wanted to congratulate you again. We're really looking forward to, after today, doing the work in the East Los Angeles Planning Commission, which affects so much of CD-13 as well, and it's really a moment in which there's so much happening positively, but as we also see the prices of rental properties and everything else going through the roof, we really have some challenges to meet, making sure good development goes through. So we look forward to working with you on that.
Thank you very much, Councilman.
Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
That is approved.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for serving the city. Forthwith, please. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Item number seven is confirmation of Ms. Cynthia Reese to the Board of Public Works Commissioners, and a Public Works Committee Report recommends approval.
Okay, colleagues, item number seven now before us. We do have a committee report recommending approval. Are there members wishing to be heard on this item? Mr. Dudlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, I just wanted to rise in support of this nomination. And Cindy, it's so good to see you here. As we have constantly tried our best to do is to see commissioners come in who are going to play significant roles in the city that have demonstrated a real commitment to this city. Cindy has run her own business for many, many years. She's been a great contributor to the economy here in Los Angeles. She's got a real passion for making LA the kind of city that I think we all talked about during our campaign speeches. And I think this is just an exciting day in Los Angeles to have somebody of your caliber, somebody with your background, somebody that has done so much in reaching out to communities, not just in one part of LA. I've seen your work throughout Los Angeles, and I know that in my years working in the state legislature, under two speakers, I constantly came to you for questions and ideas, and I found you to be just incredibly responsive, very articulate in terms of your ideas and your visions. And I just think, members, we got a real chance here today to put a real champion to work for the city of Los Angeles. And so I rise in very strong support of this appointment.
Why, thank you very much, Councilmember.
Thank you. Would you like to make any statement as well?
No, I just wanted to say that I'm very honored to be here this morning. I'm really looking forward to serving the constituents of Los Angeles, and I would like to thank the mayor and everyone here for giving me this opportunity.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Zine at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had the opportunity to meet Wednesday evening at the evening council meeting in Glass Hill Park, and expressed your interest in this position and the fact that you'd be representing the San Fernando Valley, portions of my district, as I recall, a very demanding district, a district that feels they've been neglected for years and years and years. And I know that Janice Wood has been a wonderful commissioner to work with. When we've had problems, we've gone to her, and I just want to acknowledge that she's done a great job working with my office and the constituents out in the southwest valley to make sure that the Public Works Departments deliver the services that we keep promising to the people of the San Fernando Valley. So I wish you well. I'm going to support you in this, and I hope we can maintain that same type of relationship that we've had with Janice, because it's been a wonderful coordinated effort to do what's right for the community in the area of the Public Works arenas, because there's so many different services that that department, that commission, is responsible for, the different entities that fall under that commission.
I agree. She's a great commissioner.
She's really good, and I know you'll do well with that. I just want to continue that type of relationship. So it really short-circuits a problem when a constituent gets frustrated and it can't get resolved. And we go to the commissioner from Public Works and say, Cynthia, we really have a problem, and bam, you snap your fingers, the department spins around, gets it done, and the constituents say, what a wonderful council member. Well, hey, what a wonderful commissioner, what a wonderful department to deliver that service. And I know we've got a plate full of activities that have to be delivered, and we need to do our best to do the best we can. So I commend you on this position, and I know you do well in it, because everyone has spoken highly of you and your qualifications and your experience. And just think that every constituent is another person who says, what are we doing for your tax dollars? Well, we're going to show what we're doing for them. Thank you, and thank you for getting in this position.
I look forward to working with you.
Mr. Cardenas.
And I didn't get a chance to say good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
And council members.
Well, we had the pleasure to discuss the awesome task that you're about to embark on. But one of the things in our conversation that I was extremely pleased about, and something that I know you're going to be successful in, in making sure that you bring this important department that does such important things, as Mr. Zine pointed out, you're going to bring it closer to the people. You're going to bring it closer to the people who are actually being served. We're going to get more input by them. And also, more importantly, with that communication, we're going to get better understanding, so that they understand that the reason why X number of streets in their neighborhood are being paved, and we haven't had a chance to get that particular street done, explaining to them why. And I think that when you take the time to do that, you're going to see that the people are much more understanding and much more appreciative of the vast amount of work that this department does get done. So I want to thank you for focusing on that, and I'm sure, and I expect, and I know, that you're going to be successful in that. And with your vast experience of being a public servant in your own capacity, serving the people throughout the city of Los Angeles and beyond, you're very well-prepared for this responsibility. And I wish you well, and I give you my full support.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Mr. Villarrealosa.
Yes, Mr. President. Members, as old saying, that the apple doesn't fall far from the tree. And with Ms. Reese today is her mother, a woman who, could you please stand up, Colleen Colleen is a former commissioner, both city and county as well, a activist in the Native American community, a resident of the, well, was a resident of the 14th Council district, is now a resident of the 1st. And I can tell you, a big reason why Ms. Reese is as talented as she is is because of her great mom. This woman raised four kids on her own and is a great and dear friend, so I wanted to introduce her. And her son is also here with us, Arturo Chavez. Arturo, if you could, and his girlfriend, Jacqueline, if you could stand up as well. And this is that, it takes a family, everyone. And in this case, it starts with Colleen. I wanted to acknowledge her for everything that you've done to make Ms. Reese such a great candidate and a fine commission member. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and congratulations, Ms. Ruiz, on the nomination. I think it's a wonderful nomination. I too enjoyed our time together, talking, hearing about, you've not only been a leader in your adult life, but learning even as a student about the awards and the impact that you made as a leader in northeast Los Angeles, and will continue to. I'm really looking forward to working with you, both geographically in the area and functionally, whether it's street lighting and things like that. You've just been really a great voice. And the thing I think is most impressive, colleagues, is the way that we talk about empowering neighborhood councils, but actually drawing somebody from a neighborhood council and putting them right on Public Works. And that was the first thing out of your mouth, was that how closely you wanted to link those neighborhood councils to Public Works. And I can't think of another department neighborhood councils care more about. Maybe it's tied with the police department, but those two are just so critical to all of those constituent concerns neighborhood councils hear about. Get this street fixed. I have a pothole, a sidewalk, trees, the lighting that we want to put up. You can really make a difference in people's lives, block by block, street by street, and I know that you will. And so I'm very proud to support you today, and just want to congratulate you again.
Thank you, and I want to say congratulations to you for having a great meeting on Wednesday night, bringing the city council to the community. I think that was a great event, and thank you for doing that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ruiz.
Mr. Zine.
For a second time, and I just, when I sat down, excuse me, I looked at the back of the room, and hiding behind the pillar there is Janice Wood. She's hiding there. And Janice, I just want to acknowledge you. I didn't know you were saying, you were back there when I was making my comments about the wonderful work and how well you've done that commission. But then I sat down, I saw you in that vest. I don't know if we're going to evacuate the building or why you're wearing it. Oh, it's Halloween, that's why. But I just want to acknowledge that Janice is here, and she's probably keeping her fingers crossed to make sure you get confirmed. So, Janice, thank you in person for all the wonderful work on that commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Congratulations, you're confirmed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for serving the city. We'll send that item forthwith, please. Next item.
Item number five is confirmation of Mr. David Trujillo to the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners. Education Neighborhood Committee Report submits this recommendation without recommendation. A motion is required.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. It's a great pleasure that I'm here to support David Trujillo, who I believe should be making his way to the table. Mr. Trujillo is an individual that you talk about how we overcome. This is one of those life stories. Here's a person who has earned his degrees in the School of Hard Knocks. He's come from a farmworker background, knows what it is to struggle when you are at a point where you need to provide for your family. But at the same time, always thinking about the community. And he has a life history of doing that. At one point, he was the director of Children of War back in the late '70s, early '80s. Another point, he went into a whole process of becoming more effective as a community advocate, joined the district office of CD-1, became the chief field deputy during the time we were having the riots and the earthquakes, and spearheaded many grassroots efforts in healing our city. And then he goes forward and becomes well-rounded in the academic field and obtains a master's from Amherst and a degree from Harvard in trade union negotiations and development, the trade union program. So here we have an individual who has been able to understand both sides of the table, has come from a place in which very rarely do we hear those voices when decisions have to be made on how we impact quality of life issues. I personally have worked with him for many, many years. He is one of the individuals that would come up in the evening and get involved with a debate on how this library should look at Highland Park. And his priority was the children and the families in the area. How would you make it safe? He worked with us on developing the goal line and the community issues there. So I can go through a laundry list of how he has been able to understand all sides of the issues. To have him in the neighborhood council, to have him as part of DUN, would be a true asset for everyone. When we talk about the emerging populations and how we are trying to get those folks who do not have the leisure to be at these meetings, to actually have that voice heard in these sessions is very critical. I encourage and I vote for Mr. David Trujillo. I know he will represent not only Alserino, not only Lincoln Heights, Cypress Park, but the whole city in all of its dynamics. And we talk about issues of equity and issues of impact and quality of life. So I just want to thank David for his hard work, his commitment to public life.
Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was wondering, since this is about an appointment to the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, the Neighborhood Commissioners, and we're all believers in the community having input into these kind of decisions. I know there are five people here that would like to speak, so I would like to move that we open the public comment for about five minutes, just so those who have made the opportunity to come down to City Hall would have an opportunity to address the full city council on this matter.
Is there a second on that motion? Okay, well, I think we can do it without objection. This is, item number five. I do have a couple of speaker cards here. Council calls forward Linda McGuire, Meg Barkley, Hugo Garcia, Mark Woodsmaul, and Jim McQuiston. If I can ask you to form a line behind the speaker's podium. Mr. Reyes, before public comment.
Council President, I'd like to ask if we can ask Mr. Trujillo to step away from the center table, since they're talking about the process, and not Mr. Trujillo. We can dismiss him from the center table and have him come back when we discuss his appointment?
Just don't go too far away. But if I can ask the public speakers to please line up behind the podium. And since we have moved the five-minute hearing, and there are five speakers, if I can ask you to keep your comments to about a minute, to be fair to everybody. And you've also had, just for the record, colleagues, members of the public did have an opportunity to weigh in at the committee level. The public hearing requirement has been satisfied. We are reopening the public hearing for five minutes here. Please come forward and introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Linda McGuire. I'm speaking on behalf of, hi, my name is Linda McGuire. I'm speaking on behalf of Robert James Logan to the City of Los Angeles City Council regarding Commissioner Tammy Membreno. Ladies and gentlemen, I am presently a member of the Board of Governors of the Lincoln Heights Neighborhood Council. It is not without surprise and disappointment that I have come to understand that Ms. Membreno may not serve further on the commission due to a flaw in the early notification system that prevented me from input on the matter. I have had occasion to work with Tammy, CBO to CBO, on events in the past in Alserino. She has always been community-oriented and community-concerned. Her work finds her with the finger on the pulse of the northeast communities. Her appointment to the commission brought to that body both insight and professionalism. It seems untoward that not to reappoint her to that body has given her experience on that commission alone. She has listened, deliberated, and decided in an even hand judiciously during the mill storm of certifications of that neighborhood councils in the last year and months that involved high passion and complexity. Her continued presence in the commission ensures evidence based consistently because of her experience and work on that panel and her personal professionalism. I recommend without reservation that she continue on the commission. Sign, Robert James Logan.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. And I'd ask that we keep one eye on the clock here, to be fair.
My name's Meg Barkley. I'm a founding member of a neighborhood council in the northeast area. I've been working on that neighborhood council for two and a half years, and I just don't think that now is the time for new leadership on the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners, particularly replacing the commissioner who represents the northeast area. Our area in particular has had a lot of challenges to neighborhood councils pretty much across the board, and the current commissioner has worked with us consistently, and to take that away would probably not be very helpful. So I appreciate your consideration.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Hugo Garcia. I'm the vice president of the LA 32 Neighborhood Council. And I'm going to ask that you consider, strongly consider, and urge you to vote no to the motion. And the reason is that according to the city charter, according to the city ordinance, the plan for the neighborhood councils, we were supposed to have input into, or were supposed to have on an ongoing basis, input through the early notification system on issues that affect the neighborhood council, and that's what the ordinance was developed for. In this case, we didn't hear about it until after the appointment was made, the nomination was made. We think that the city council should be for the community having input, so we strongly urge that you vote no on this. We have taken a position in favor of Tammy Membreno as far as LA 32. We think she's doing a fine job, and we just ask that the city council respect the city, the ordinances, and everything that is set forth to govern the neighborhood council. To not do that would send a message to the community that you actually don't believe in the process that's set forth for the neighborhood councils. So I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Mark Woodsmaul. I am the president of the LA 32 Neighborhood Council. We are before you today because we believe that there has now emerged in the charter a gray area. We're in a very uncomfortable position, because while we applaud Council President Padilla for his quick action in filling the vacancies on the commissions, we are also very concerned because this is the first time that appointments by the council president are being interpreted and considered before you. I advance to you today that the decision you make will lay the steps for the future of how the city considers this process under the charter. Very specifically, when you turn your attention to the charter and specifically to the handout that we have provided to each of you, when decisions are made by the neighborhood regarding the neighborhood councils by the city council, the city council committees, et cetera, these procedures shall include a reasonable opportunity for the neighborhood councils and community to be considered. Now, an argument has been advanced that Mr. Padilla, as council president, is not named specifically by this subsection of the charter. However, I assert to you, Mr. Padilla is the council president. He is appointed by you, the council. He is not popularly elected to this post, which means that ultimately, the standard that you have set for yourselves under the charter, that appointments by the city council should be open to public comment, should also apply to our very great president.
Thank you, sir. Ask you to conclude. We do have one more speaker waiting.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Jim McQuiston.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. I'll make this pretty brief. Obviously, we have Murphy's Law here that's been invoked. It's a very unfortunate situation. We have two highly qualified people, and what to do? It's up to the council president to make the decision, and he's made the decision, and we have to go by it. We wish both of them well, and we hope that in the future, the early notification system will be observed.
Thank you. This concludes public comment on this item. We did receive one more speaker card from a gentleman named Gilbert. We'll add that to the record, but the time has expired. Returning now to council discussion. Ms. Han, you had the floor. Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, and thank you for those of you who took the opportunity to come down here. And colleagues, this is unfortunately one of those difficult moments. It's not like we've not had them before many times. But as was stated before, this was an unusual situation where a deadline was passed for the mayor to make his recommendations and appointments to this commission, and under the city charter, it falls to our president to actually make that nomination. And let me say in my comments, and I said these in committee, and you'll notice that today before us, unlike probably 99.9% of commission appointments, this one comes to the full council with no recommendation from my committee of education and neighborhood. Dennis Zine and I were there that day, and we split in terms of what we wanted to say to the full city council, but we felt like certainly the full city council needs to be aware of what we heard in committee, and it came as no recommendation. And for me personally, of all the commissions that impact people, certainly the Department of Neighborhood Commissioners are the ones that set policy, sit in judgment of everything from boundary disputes to other certifications to meeting places. No other commission really impacts our neighborhoods like this commission in terms of neighborhood councils. And the neighborhood council in this particular district really sort of felt like the process short-circuited input from all neighborhood councils who might be impacted by a commission appointment. So on that basis, I voted no in committee to not approve David's appointment, mainly because I felt of all the processes in the city, this one particularly should have made every effort to go to all neighborhood councils for their input on this particular appointment. And they might have all agreed that David was appropriate, and they might have overwhelmingly said, David is a good person, David does represent our communities, David is an activist, and he is. And what I'm saying today is nothing against David. You know, David is a fine person, would be a good commissioner. The only reason I voted no was because of the process, and I wanted to stand with the neighborhood council in letting them know that I agreed with them, that I thought the process was sort of short-circuited their input. However, I must say, on the other hand, this is the process. This is the process. Commissioners are nominated, they come to committee, and then they come to the full city council, and you actually do have an opportunity to weigh in on whether or not you want us to approve their nomination, which has happened sort of in a limited way, but it actually has happened. So I'm here today to again not urge my fellow council members to vote one way or the other. You need to vote the way you feel is responsible. All I know is today I'm going to stand with the neighborhood councils and oppose this nomination just based on the process and not on the fine man that David is here today.
Mr. Villarreal.
Yes, Mr. President, members. This is one of those situations where you're often damned if you do and damned if you don't. And yet, leadership requires that you speak out. I was not at the Neighborhood Council Committee last week. I was doing my duty as a citizen, serving as a juror, and I've said then, my staff said on my behalf, that we had concerns with respect to the process here. Tammy Membrano was, has been, a fine representative on the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners. Mayor Hahn, when he resubmitted her name, asked me if I supported her, and I said I did. And I did because in speaking with my constituents and speaking with the members of the 14th Council of Magic District, including the members of LA 32, they agreed that she was doing a fine job. Since then, as Ms. Hahn has said and as we've heard, there have been, the time lapsed for that appointment. The council president, as per the charter, made a nomination, and that's what's before us today. I have to speak out against the process, clearly. I think that we could have handled this better, without question. But before us today is the appointment of Mr. Trujillo. And I got to tell you, I've known David for 30 years. I've known him in his capacity as an activist. I know him in his capacity as a union organizer. I know him as a father. His son, David Edward, is here. Our sons played soccer together. I know him as a family man. And I don't want to get two issues confused. On the one hand, I think there's agreement that this process wasn't handled right. The easy thing for me to do is to vote no today. Many of my constituents are not happy with the appointment, not because they don't like Mr. Trujillo, but they don't like the process that occurred here. I don't particularly like the process either, but before us today is the appointment of Mr. Trujillo. And I can't in good conscience stand up today and say that he's not qualified, that he won't do a good job, that he shouldn't be a commissioner on the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners. Finally, let me just say that I'm hoping that as a result of what's happened here, that we're going to do everything possible to, with the mayor, advocate that Tammy be replaced, whoever the next person is. I think that's the appropriate thing to do. I think she belongs on this commission, and I believe that she would serve the city well. But as I said, the appointment before us is that of Mr. Trujillo, and given that, I cannot stand in the way of him because he's qualified.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee, which I serve with my distinguished colleague, Janice Hahn, we were there a couple hours that afternoon. In fact, you had an appointment, you had to leave. This was a long deliberation, a long painful deliberation. And when you have two people who are well-qualified, very dedicated, and there's a blunder in the system, and the blunder in the system came from the mayor's office, and that's what started this trail. And I don't want to see you, David, victimized by a system that didn't work as it should have. And the charter is what we live by in the City of Los Angeles, and it clearly sets the pattern. When something is not done, something else takes place. So I'm going to support the recommendation. And in committee, what I said, no recommendation, because I wanted to come to the full body of the council and try and work something out. And nothing negative against the individual, Tammy, who you're replacing. But it's a focus of if we say no, it still goes back to the council president. It doesn't go back to the mayor. And I believe that there will be a commission that will be satisfactory, that Tammy will be able to achieve in the future. But we've got positive people who want to have positive contribution, and for you to do this at no pay and a lot of aggravation and the patience that you have, and I know your history and dedication, it's that, and I'm sure Tammy would be the same attitude, when you have two honest, well-qualified individuals. The system was not our problem. The error was not our problem, but it's now in our hands to make a decision. And I don't want to jeopardize you because something didn't go right in the initial stages. And if it would have been on the right time schedule, you wouldn't be here for this commission. You'd be here for something else, and I'm sure we would pass it through without any problem. But when it comes to the situation as we're in now, we get paid to make these decisions, and I'm going to support you in this commission, and hopefully down the road, we'll find a commission for Tammy. She'll be able to find that, and hopefully the mayor's staff will do what they're supposed to do when it comes to the timeframes that are established in the charter, and those timeframes are in the charter for a specific reason. And if the mayor doesn't act, then it comes into the council president's hands, which in this case, I'm going to support the president's nomination and wish you well in that commission. And since Janice and I and Antonio are part of that committee, we will make sure that we will assist with that commission, delivering the service to the people in neighborhood councils. So that's where my vote's going. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to just clarify a few points that were made today by various individuals. First of all, there was a public hearing, there was an opportunity for the public to speak in the Education and Neighborhoods Committee, and that did in fact take place. And matter of fact, it was a long deliberation, so there was a good opportunity there for people to be heard. Also, we had a public comment again here today. In addition to that, as to the process, perhaps what we can do, it's up to the chair of that committee, maybe Ms. Hahn might want to go back and get the chronology of how the appointments were made to this commission in the past by the previous mayor and the current mayor to see how that has taken place, so that should we ever be in this position again as the council president under the charter has the responsibility to make this appointment and has exercised that responsibility, maybe we can understand that better, and some recommendations might come out of that committee, so that we'll have less rhetoric, so that we'll have less consternations, and so that we could not have to have this kind of discussion, unfortunately, in front of a very qualified and good individual, Mr. David Trujillo. And that goes to my next point. Mr. Trujillo is a very well and skilled individual for this kind of responsibility. As a matter of fact, I met Mr. Trujillo more than once in the San Fernando Valley, and this is a very, very large city, even though Mr. Trujillo doesn't live in the valley. He is someone who understands many, many parts of this city. He has a fine, fine background and training for this kind of responsibility. And in addition to that, one thing that I know about Mr. Trujillo, he has a big heart, and he knows how to listen, he knows how to learn. And one thing that I'd like to say, Mr. Trujillo, I think you're handling this just fine. There's a lot going on that really doesn't have much to do with you as an individual, but I hope that doesn't cloud the fact of the matter is that we appreciate and really want to welcome you in this responsibility that's going to take you away from your family, it's going to take you away from a lot of other things, and thank you so much for stepping up and volunteering for this responsibility. And we have other issues we're going to have to take care of here in the city that have nothing to do with you. I hope this doesn't hinder you in any way, and I hope and expect that you will be appreciated and welcomed by all those who are concerned about neighborhood councils and your responsibility. So thank you for stepping forward, and I support you 110%.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to stand in support of David, having worked with him for a number of years as a member of CD1 when I was in the police department. And I think it really limits his capacity. We say he's an activist. I think he did so much more than just being an activist. He was a leader in that community. He drove a number of agendas in that community. He made sure that city departments certainly were responsive to that community. And when we dealt with issues such as safety, whether we dealt with the Rampart area, or we dealt with Hollenbeck or a variety of others, he knew the even hand in how to address those concerns, and he was on the forefront of dealing with the gang problem, also the forefront of bringing to our attention when he thought city services were not being forthcoming and not in a balanced way. I think that it is an unfortunate situation that he has to sit here and go through this, but I think it is important to know that I think the process worked, that there is a charter that says that if you have a certain period of time, if it elapses, that the president of this council makes that decision. We see commissioners go and come, and I think on other selections, we did not have an added step, whether Mr. Padilla made that selection because of the process. But I think it's important that David knows that we support him. Certainly, it is a great position to be in, is to have a large number of qualified commissioners. And so I don't think it's a mark against the prior commissioner, but certainly I think it's an enhancement to the process that you're here, that you're capable, and that we're looking forward to the service you provide on one of our most important commissions.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. You know, I rise to, I think, most things that have been said well state the strengths of both of these individuals, and I would echo them. I want to just put a small thing into the record and maybe amend what we have before us today and add what Mr. Zine was saying, and make a specific instruction from the council to encourage the mayor and the council president at the next appropriate opportunity to consider Tammy for a commission appointment, that we actually go on the record saying that, so that we can have this move forward today, but at the same time, what everybody's sentiment has been around this horseshoe just made official, and that we make that recommendation. Obviously, we can't force anybody to make any specific appointments, but I think it would mean a lot in showing this council was unified around that, as well as on the strengths and the support for David and his great service that will be forthcoming, too. So if there's no objection, I'd move out.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, David, yeah, I do have a, what do you call it, a favorite former deputies. I don't know, just happen to favor former deputies because of their experience, and as council member Parks, then general manager, chief of the police department, spoke about how you drive community agendas. You're going to get through this situation here. I know there's some people from 9032 who I talked to in the hallway who have a difference of opinion. Whoever is appointing to be able to select, it's their option to select, and that's how it goes, whether it's the president of the council or the mayor. I don't like to see people get into it. But the thing that I wanted to mention to you is in this job, you have to focus and make sure that the Department of Neighborhoods is working to help the neighborhoods and those organizations focus on what they want, not get caught up in bureaucracy, not get caught up in long dissertations of into the middle of the night about whether or not they can meet or how they could, whatever they have to do. They must be able to develop the skill like you had as a deputy, to see what the problems were in a neighborhood and find the resources to challenge those problems. And that's what I want you to remember as you go forward, because I think it's real important that we help this whole new team of empowerment, help that they focus properly and get not cut up, which could happen easily, but focus on saying what do they need for their neighborhood and how they could deliver. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Reyes.
This is Reyes to call the questions.
Well, you're the last speaker on the queue, so I believe we're ready for a vote.
A motion is required to approve the recommendation.
Mr. Reyes had moved it in his first comment. Is there a second?
Yes.
Mr. Parks, seconds, and we'll consider Mr. Garcetti's request without objection on the future consideration of Tammy Membrano. Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes, one no.
Congratulations, you're confirmed. Thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you. Just let me say that I'm, as a citizen volunteer, I mean, I honestly believe that it's an honor to serve this great city of ours, and, you know, I thought this discussion was positive. I think some good things are going to come out of it, and I'm going to offer you my skills, my knowledge, my talent, and to serve the best I can as a member of the Neighborhood Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll send this item forthwith. Next item, please.
Item number one.
Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like us to take up special one at this time, but before I do that, can I ask for reconsideration on item 22A? This is a reward motion to a witness on a murder that was a successful arrest, and there's just a technical amendment. It's been distributed 22A. So can I move first to reconsider 22 and then the adoption of 22A?
Okay. Members, we have a motion for reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, that's reconsidered back before us. Ms. Misakowski.
I move 22A as circulated, just to correct the correction.
As a substantive motion. Let's open the roll on 22A, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That is approved. And now we do have a request to take an item out of order. Colleagues, there is a special one that has been distributed. Is there any objection to taking this item out of order? Seeing none, we'll take up special one next. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, the Board of Police Commissioners adopted a special order revising the police department's burglar alarm dispatch policy. Although pursuant to Charter Section 245, such action would not become final until five council days after the action, the special order set forth an effective date of November 1, 2003. In order to avoid public confusion and/or reliance on the effective date, immediate action is required. Pursuant to the government code, council must first determine whether there is a need to take immediate action and that the need for action came through the attention of council after the posting of today's agenda. If such a finding is made, council may then consider the substantive motion.
Thank you very much. Members wishing to be heard on the findings? I have Ms. Hahn and Ms. Gruel on the queue. Is this on the findings? Ms. Hahn? Okay. If nobody wishes to be heard on the findings, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That findings are made. Special one is now before us. Let's hear from Ms. Misakowski, the author of the motion, and then I have to... Let's hear from Ms. Misakowski, the author of the motion, and then I have to follow Ms. Hahn, Ms. Gruel, and Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, this deals with something that we had dealt with and thought we had reasonably solved, which was the burglar alarm policy, false alarms, responding to false alarms, et cetera. After a task force work, after a council recommendation back to the commission, the police commission said it would consider what we had done, and in July of this year, the police commission did adopt a modified alarm dispatch policy that was consistent with what the council had asked them to consider. On July 25th, we took the matter up in public safety, because consistent with that alarm policy, the modified policy, there were supposed to be a number of things that went into effect that we needed response on. One, we needed a response about from ITA, from how our police service dispatchers can handle this. Can they determine quickly, efficiently, when an alarm comes in, 291, that has been a false alarm, been the second false alarm, been sent where it needs to, and then not dispatch after that? We haven't had that clarity provided to this council. I don't think that that clarity's been provided to the commission. We also asked in committee that, as we move forward, with the complete understanding that this new policy was going to be full-cost recovery. Those citizens, those businesses in our city which have alarms, which are going to be part of receiving this and part of the rules that would apply, we're now going to pay for it fully. Since July 23rd, 25th, we know even how much more important it is that we get full-cost recovery. Those who are receiving a special service, a special benefit, should pay for that benefit in a system that makes sense, is clear, and fully recovers the cost of that benefit. That full-cost recovery report hasn't been done. Nonetheless, the Board of Police Commissioners adopted on Tuesday a report that said, we're going to implement the alarm policy tomorrow. It's going to go into effect. None of these questions have been answered. Moreover, there was supposed to be a significant public outreach, letting people know what the new policy was going to be, letting people know that after that second false alarm, police weren't going to come. There was a city attorney report saying that we need to have both people know what's going on, and we need to have an absolute risk-free ability to ascertain that that second false alarm has hit, no more dispatch. Those things haven't been addressed, and yet, the police commission adopted and said this policy goes into effect tomorrow. We don't know that the training has occurred to the PSRs to know how they're supposed to determine whether or not a call has been dispatched, whether it's a false alarm or not. Members, this is, it was premature. The commission should not have acted. Special one is asking for the council to 245 the police commission decision. I was not going to bring it in until Tuesday, because when we learned what the commission had done, we put a matter on our Public Safety Committee on Monday to look at these issues, to determine what the answers to some of these questions are, how many of the reports that we asked for have been done, where are we? What I am asking today, I'm asking our police commission representative, Mr. Dan Koenig, to come forward, because I think we've gotten confirmation from him that they can delay having this go into effect tomorrow, November 1st, which was the action date that the commission indicated. Not act today on 245. I asked for Rule 23 so we could discuss it. If we get the police commission to agree that they won't put this into effect tomorrow, then we can have our hearing on Monday, continue the 245 until next week, Tuesday or Wednesday, and then determine whether we need to 245 it based on the other implementation schedule, the other elements that need to be in place for this to go forward. Technically, this was going to go forward tomorrow. Do we know what the fee for false alarms is? No. Do we know how they're going to be checked? Do we know, are we going to get full recovery? No. This could not go into effect tomorrow. So, Mr. Koenig, do we have the police commission, or is you representing the police commission, agreement that the department will not implement this policy until council's had the chance, at least on Monday, to get a committee briefing, bring that back in on Tuesday to determine whether or not the council needs to act further on asserting jurisdiction?
Ms. Misakowski, after this response, had asked you to sort of wrap it up. Would you have other speakers waiting to be heard?
Good afternoon. Dan Koenig, Executive Director of the Police Commission. I apologize for not having a tie on in costume for Halloween, playing a role of a guy who got called in on his day off. We will be delaying implementation of the order until the council has an opportunity to consider the 245, and we're certainly not going to implement the order where that is an issue, and the education component has taken place. So, we're delaying the order.
I appreciate that we had that opportunity, that affirmation. I look forward to the other discussion of the other members of council. I will ask that we continue this motion today until Tuesday, and then find out at the report on Monday where we are, whether or not we need to assert jurisdiction or not. We can receive and file it on Tuesday if it's not necessary, but let's find out what we need to know. Keep this opportunity available until we know what we need to know, which we hopefully will learn on Monday in committee.
Ms. Hahn.
Mr. President, colleagues, I can't believe we're still talking about this issue. But no, actually, as you know, we've had some disagreements on this city council in terms of this issue, but I will say that I can stand here today and remain consistent, particularly on the issue of public notification and community outreach, which is why I was personally outraged, as were all the neighborhood councils in the city, when the policy originally came up to begin not responding anymore to burglar alarms in the city of Los Angeles unless they were verified. On that issue, I was outraged, again, as I said, many Angelinos were, particularly because we were about to implement a policy where people did not know we were doing it. They had no notification. There was no public education on what that would mean to people. And again, according to the city charter and what we heard earlier, under the new city charter, you know, we have to make sure that people can weigh in on decisions that are made by the police commission, that are made by the city council, that are made by boards and commissions all over the city. So, on this one issue, I can actually stand in agreement with Ms. Misakowski. I am not, at this point, convinced that we need to insert our jurisdiction over the matter, but what I am particularly interested in is hearing again that this policy will not go into place tomorrow, would not be begun to be implemented. I think we need a commitment either 15 or 30 days that we don't implement this new policy until we have adequately notified all the burglar alarm customers in the city that, in fact, we do have a new policy that will go into place, that after two false alarms, they will no longer have response to their alarm unless it has been verified by a third party. So, I think at least, you know, every alarm company in this city should be required to send a letter to their customers notifying them of the change of this policy before it goes in place, as well as the increased fees that we're going to be charging people for false alarms in the city. But the irony, again, is every day that we delay implementation, of course, the police department is still under the old policy, which means our police officers are responding to every alarm in this city, false or otherwise. And in fact, when we finally implement this new policy, it will reduce the amount of time our police officers are responding to false alarms, and will actually give us more police officers back on the street fighting other kinds of crimes. So, this new policy is a good balance towards still serving our constituents in Los Angeles while preserving our scarce resources in the police department. But I am in favor of delaying the implementation until we notify the public that, in fact, this new policy is going into effect.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Janice, I couldn't have said it better. Janice and I, you know, led the fight to ensure that we did have response to alarms, and also to limit the number of false alarms that occur in the city of Los Angeles. I supported the introduction, and we spoke to Ms. Misakowski earlier about the Rule 23 today, so we could have this discussion and have Mr. Koenig come away from his day off to assure us that they were not going to implement immediately. All too often, the public is the last to know, and we want to make sure that they are educated about the new policy that we have now adopted and the commission has adopted. And I want to say that again, we have adopted a new policy by the city of Los Angeles. These other issues that are outlined relative to the amount of funds, et cetera, that was what we gave the department the responsibility to implement. And I'm all for not micromanaging our departments on that way of the implementation of that aspect. On the policy issue, we disagreed initially, but have come to a mutually beneficial, I think, agreement that we are going to be able to respond to alarms, but not have an excessive amount of alarms. I trust the department to come back and be able to ensure that they have the costs to be able to pay for those upgrades that may be necessary, and fee increases where appropriate. So, I support today us discussing it so that we can allow the department, or we did allow the department to tell us they were going to delay implementation. However, as Ms. Hahn mentioned, I am not in favor, at this point in time, to having a 245 on Tuesday. So, I would ask my colleagues, again, we've had this discussion, we've had this debate, we've had this dialogue, let's move on, but let's delay implementation for educational purposes.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. What a strange day. Janice Hahn, Wendy Gruel, Cindy Misakowski, and myself all agree we ought to delay implementation of the new burglar alarm policy. Must be Halloween or something like that. It...
Is this the trick or the treat?
Is this the trick or the treat, Mr. Smith asks? I think this new policy, Mr. Smith, is the trick, because I've always had a lot of concerns about this new policy as public policy. In fact, I still think it's bad public policy, and I have serious misgivings about it, and that's why I co-authored this resolution with Ms. Misakowski. She took the words right out of my mouth as to what our concerns are about implementation. It's not micromanagement, it's a train wreck that we're trying to prevent. And so, the concerns I have are serious. They're fiscal, they're public safety-related, and on Monday, we're going to kick the tires on this proposal of the police commission. One additional question that I'm going to be asking on Monday, I think it's very critical for all of us to focus on this. Can we really be asking the people of this city to raise their taxes right now, to hire new police officers, to spend their time responding to false alarms at burglar alarms in only 6% of the houses in this city? I think it's a serious public policy question that is raised by this proposal. We will be addressing this on Monday and in the future. So, I appreciate the fact that we're all in agreement now on delay, and I look forward to a healthy discussion on Monday on public safety.
Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to rise and say, Mr. Koenig, that, you know, one of the things, and we just had Chief Bratton in here the other day, and a number of us talked about where we thought we're in great shape right now in terms of, I shouldn't say great shape, but in better shape than we've been in terms of police-community relations. And I really want to thank Cindy Misakowski, and Jack, and Alex for bringing this forward, because we've got to protect that moment. We've got to protect the place that we're in right now, and I think, I don't know how this happened, I'm sure we'll figure all that out on Monday, but the steps that this department is taking to reassure the public and reach out to the public on what we're doing, to be in compliance with a consent decree, to boost employee morale, to increase the number of officers, to reduce crime in LA, this burglar alarm policy obviously speaks to a whole lot of that. And it is important that we don't move forward without the kind of outreach, and to make sure that we have the type of fiscal information that is needed. So, I really wanted to just say that you've been doing a great job, the chief has been doing a great job, and I think right now, it's a great catch, a great hold, and I applaud Cindy, Councilmember Misakowski, for doing this today, and then obviously, we'll see what happens next week. But it is an important moment. Let's not wreck this moment, because there's been a lot of work, I commend you all on that, and I just say, let's not rush just to kind of check off another thing done and get out in front of the public. So, Cindy, thank you for doing this, and Jack and Alex as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ludlow, and Ms. Misakowski.
Let me just sum up. This is to be continued. It's not going into effect tomorrow. We've had that assurance. A very, very detailed, heavy meeting on Monday in committee. I would like to continue this matter based, and I think it was appropriate to Rule 23, we got assurance from the department that it won't be implemented, but we can still keep the question out until Tuesday. So, I move that this matter be continued to Tuesday, where we will report back the information from public safety, and then, at that point, determine whether or not we need to assert jurisdiction. So, my motion is to continue this till Tuesday.
Thank you very much, Ms. Misakowski. We have that motion before us. Any other colleagues wishing to be heard? Seeing none, if we can open the roll and the motion, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That item is approved, and we have asserted jurisdiction on the item. It will be referred to Public Safety Committee.
No, the motion was to continue the matter, and it will be on Tuesday's continuation agenda.
Sorry, we will have that on Tuesday's continuation agenda, colleagues. My apologies. Next item, please.
Item number one was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have an item, and I know I hate to hold you, Madam City, Deputy City Attorney, all this time. We had a meeting this morning on the matter, and I just wanted to make sure it's in the record and we have no dispute. There's an application regarding Trader Joe's at 6751 Fallbrook Avenue, and there is a time limit on this, has to be done by November 10th, and I just wanted to make it in the record, so there's no dispute, since we've had a number of problems to this point, not necessarily with Trader Joe's, but with the development in general, where commitments were made to my office, the community, and then backpedaled. And I wanted to somehow assure the public in the West Hills community that it joins the renovation of the Fallbrook Shopping Center, that we are solidly locked down with the individuals, the development people, on this particular project, and they won't be able to backpedal and not commit, not comply, and not build out as what's been promised for the community's safety in many arenas. So, if you can please comment on that. The reason I called the special was to make sure that there's no dispute, no one uncertain. It's exactly where we're going with this.
Thank you, Councilmember Zine. At the request of your office and with your assistance, we were able to have discussions with General Growth, the developer of the Fallbrook Mall, and we have reached an agreement that's been memorialized in writing. They have committed to extending a six-to-eight-foot wall on the Westerly property line near the Ralphs on the property. They've agreed to a condition regarding deliveries and trash pickup. They've also agreed, at their cost, to a new driveway and traffic signal that will help alleviate some circulation problems in the area. They have also agreed to work cooperatively with your office and other lessees and owners of parcels in that area on a solution to the day laborer issue. They've offered up 1,200 square feet of their own property to assemble a day laborer site with Labor Ready, a very reputable entity, to take care of this. But more importantly, they are committed to working on a long-term solution with Walmart, with Home Depot, with all of the other lessees, to ensure that your concerns and your community's concerns have been addressed regarding day laborers.
And in the event they don't comply with any or all, what is the recourse?
The recourse is, there may be some other approvals on other elements of the Fallbrook Mall, and they understand in no certain terms that the other lessees may have some difficulties in achieving all of their approvals, development approvals. And probably most importantly, they understand that their failure to meet these conditions may result in some major concerns from your office and from our office, and making sure that we enforce such conditions. So, I think we have a deal, and we will be working closely with them and your office in the coming weeks to nail down the details, but they have made a commitment on these general principles.
Okay, and I thank you for your participation, and Tom Henry, who's my planning director, will be working closely with you, as well as the developers on this particular project. And in a few months, we have another major development that's going to be taking place on the shopping center, and I want to just make sure that we do our homework, so we don't end up at the 11th hour, as we are now, trying to scramble to make sure that what should have been done a long time ago, and no disrespect to you or your office, you folks weren't invited until late in the game because of what was taking place with the backpedaling and previous commitments that were made. So, I thank you for your participation in this and your continuing participation, and want to assure that West Valley community that they're not going to be encountering negative problems that we've seen at other sites, where Home Depot's been established. While they're a good place to purchase, there's also some residual negative impacts on the community, and we want to assure the community in West Hills they won't be encountering that, as well as the traffic flow that we will be able to rectify with the additional Walmart and the driveway that will be traffic-controlled to alleviate that for the convenience of the people in that area. So, I thank you for your willingness to participate in this and consider this deal closed. I hope we don't have to come back to this again.
Thanks, Mr. Zine.
Thank you. I'd ask for an aye vote. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. Any other colleagues wishing to be heard on this? Seeing none, let's open the roll and the item. Seeing none, let's open the roll and the item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you very much. That item is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 26 was called special inasmuch as there's card from the public.
Okay, we've got one public speaker card. Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. Welcome, Mr. McQuiston.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. I rise in favor of this. This is Tammy Membrano's project, and she says that it's all systems go, and that's good enough for me.
Thank you very much, Mr. McQuiston. Mr. Villarosa.
First, this gives us an opportunity to make sure that we, in El Serrino, have a great organization there, and a great project that we're hoping to be a youth and family center there in the community of El Serrino. And this allows us to direct the general manager of General Services Department to prepare an amendment to the lease agreement between the GSD and Bodyo Action to include a cross-default clause which will allow CDD to take control of the site if Bodyo Action defaults in either its lease agreement with GSD or the grant agreement with CDD. There's no issue of default, but these are legal protections that the city needs and Bodyo Action understands, so we urge your aye vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Villarosa. Any other colleagues wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll. Close the roll and the item, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you very much. That item is approved. We have a number of public speaker cards on, from Mr. Robert Myers on items 27, 28, 30, and 35, if we can take those special events up together. He certainly can have more than just one normal speaker time, but we'll put them together. That way, we can have your comments together. Thank you very much, Mr. Myers, and welcome.
My name is Robert Myers. I'm from California Youth Connections. Been there for three years, legislative aide. If I could have the whole council's attention on these issues, the certain issues, the city of Los Angeles has a $47 million shortfall coming up, and they want to waive all these fees. Then again, these are exorbitant fees, and ones that are low, I didn't have a problem with. The ones that are huge, like $4,000, $1,000, can be used for services that are needed, especially in Skid Row and other parts of Los Angeles, for centralized services, because those services are not being given. That's why I do not believe these fee waivers should be given because of the fiscal problems that this city is going to be having, it's economic genocide. That's what this is. Also, on the, on item, the one giving single-room occupancy for Job Corps, I also disagree with that one, because Job Corps is a federalized program. They also have, I used to be part of Job Corps, and they are discriminatory towards disabled people, and they also are a constant violation of the Americans with Disabilities Act and the Equal Employment Opportunities Act. So I don't believe that this city should cooperate with Job Corps for those serious issues. They've been sued on numerous occasions and are still in court on numerous occasions for their bluntly violations of those acts and their gross misconduct as to the Disabilities Act. So I urge this council to look at that further and not to take up the issue on the SRO until you get some answers on those questions. Also, on the, I had one more on here that I had put a card in for, the award...
Those ones had already had a public hearing, so those are the only reasons we didn't call those, they'd already had a public hearing.
And I had, I signed up for public comment. I'm not sure if I can go ahead.
That will be coming shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you very much for your testimony, we appreciate it. If we can take up those items together, please, Madam Clerk. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those items are approved, colleagues. I would like to quickly have one more recognition. Colleagues, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Councilmember Ed Reyes for a special presentation.
Thank you, Council President. Sometimes our, this Aldivar, come on up.
Guards, if you can please get Ms. Aldivar back.
Yes, guards. We're dragging her out here. Council colleagues, thank you for your patience. We have very special people in all our staffs. They all work very hard. They're the unsung heroes. These are the folks that are in the trenches, day-to-day. They take care of us, they make sure our families are okay, and she's still running. And she got away. That's how effective this is.
We'd love to hear about her anyways.
I wanted to surprise her, I want to thank her for her hard work, to let the public know that she'll be moving on, spreading her wings in the private sector, and she didn't get away. We got her her resolution, and she literally came late to avoid presentation time. So I thought I'd catch her by surprise, and she's running now. So thank you, colleagues, thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes, and I think all of us thank Ms. Aldivar for being an incredibly positive contribution to this room, to the work of CD1 certainly, and a welcome presence to all of us. We will miss her very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Next item, please.
Item number 41 was called special for a card from the public, and there is a motion and a substitute motion.
Let's take the card first. We have Jim McQuiston from the East Hollywood Community Association.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. I rise in favor of the substitute motion. The meeting will be tomorrow. It's well worth the community input, and it's well worth the money that we're putting out to educate our neighborhood councils, so that they will be more visible downtown, and they will be more helpful downtown.
Thank you very much, Mr. McQuiston. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Dennis Zine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd also, another matter, item number one, forthwith. Thank you.
All right, we'll do forthwith on item one.
And I think we have a representative here from the convention center. If you please take the hot seat. Is the representative here from Dunn? There was a representative here from Dunn, and I spoke with Mr. Nelson last night about this item. This matter was in committee, and when it came to committee, here he comes. I knew he wouldn't abandon us at this time of crisis, the general manager of Dunn, Mr. Greg Nelson. We, at the committee meeting, schools and neighborhoods, had an item regarding the event tomorrow at the convention center, and one of the concerns I had was the cost that we were paying for food, $18.50 for a continental breakfast, and $21-something for a box lunch, which I thought was exorbitant. The convention center owned by the city of Los Angeles, the taxpayers, with a great debt yet to be paid. Looking at what we had on the agenda, and the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment provided the figures, it was over $100,000 for the food, and everything else was waived by the convention center. And then I saw a motion come in for $12,000-plus, and then now $25,000 for the convention center use. And then the other question I had, and I brought some items to illustrate and to show how the people of Los Angeles, the taxpayers, and not that we shouldn't have these conferences and we shouldn't have these congresses where we would inform neighborhood councils of what's happening, what's taking place, but I'd show you item one for exhibit, a $4 bottle of water, 12-ounce, $4, which you can buy in a store, much less. And I went out and purchased this Perrier, which is much larger, for $1.19. So my question was, why are we ripping off the taxpayers with an event for the neighborhood council members and give them good information? I've attended the previous ones, I'll be there tomorrow attending the event. So the question came up of an exclusive contract with a particular company, and they were charging us exorbitant rates. And I received a call from the general manager of the convention center saying that something would change. And I said, since this is coming out of Dunn money, which is taxpayers' money, $100,000 for a continental breakfast and a box lunch, to me was unreasonable. And I understand since that time, some major improvements have been made. The other question I have is, with Dunn staff maintaining the facility, managing the facility, the costs that we're now absorbing are waiving $25,000 for electricity and for audio/video, et cetera. My understanding at committee was that those items were already being waived, since it was an in-house operation at a city facility that we own. For example, when we're running city council, we don't charge back for turning on the lights and turning on the air conditioning. So the two questions I had, the food items, I believe we were paying exorbitant rates. The second issue is utilizing the convention center, or what other venue we use, because I look at when they have a meeting at LACC, they don't have the expenses that we are paying for, and we have this tight economic situation where we're talking about no salary increases and a hard hiring freeze, and then we spend $4, which is absolutely absurd. And I think Mr. Nelson's going to tell you how much we now have this negotiated down to. Again, it's not millions of dollars, but it's thousands of dollars that is taxpayers' money. So if you'll please respond to that, thank you. And hold my time, and then I'll sit down and relax.
We're a minute over, so if you'll just press your button again, that'll be good.
Greg Nelson, general manager, Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. Two issues. On the issue of the motion before you, this is quite normal. This is what happened before the last congress, where the Los Angeles Convention Center is not going to charge us fees that they would normally charge other people. In order for them to waive those fees for this, they must bring a motion to the city council and get your approval. When the motion was written, it was written that the total value of all of those fees that are being waived was about $12,000, but those numbers were incorrect. So there was an amendment made to reflect truly what the value of that is, the bulk of it being room costs. The value of that is $25,000. Getting on to the other issue, which is really not before you, but it did come up in the committee, which was the cost of the food. And the answer is that the Councilman Zine deserves a heck of a lot of credit for what has transpired since that committee meeting. And what happened was, is that he did point out the fact that at the last congress, we ended up spending $62,000 providing breakfast at $15.95 each, the cheapest package that was available, and the cheapest box lunch, which was $18.50, and also paying for bottled water. Total cost was about $62,000. Thanks to the help that Councilman Zine has provided to us, what we now have is the next congress coming up tomorrow, and those food costs being reduced to about $8,000. And the way that was done was, number one, to cut it to a half-day session, so we aren't paying lunch. But by working with Aramark, the concessionaire at the convention center, by working with the convention center itself, we were able to reduce the per-person costs of the breakfast. And as far as the water is concerned, yes, and there is some other credit that needs to be handed out here. At the last congress, we were paying a special rate of $3 each for these half-liter bottles of water. We have now worked out an arrangement with Aramark where what we're going to do is just bring in our own water, and they will actually help us distribute it. So in order to do that, we went to Sparklets, and they have now agreed to provide us these half-liter bottles, which had normally cost us $3, for 22 cents each. And Aramark will for free help us distribute them. So we've come a long ways, going from $62,000 down to $8, and Councilman, I thank you for your help.
Thank you very much, Mr. Laban. Your time has expired, you want to say a very...
I have my time, Mr. Zine.
Okay.
Well, can I have my say?
No.
Okay.
All right, why don't we hear his second responses to that original question, and the time is Mr. Laban's. If you have anything to add.
Puri Abasi, Assistant General Manager, Los Angeles Convention Center. At the committee meeting last week, at the direction of the committee, Los Angeles Convention Center and Department of Neighborhood Empowerment worked together to address the issues that was raised by Councilmember Zine, and we were successful in bringing down the cost significantly and developing a cost structure for city-held events at the convention center that are very close to the cost of actually putting the services forward to the constituents when they come to the convention center. As far as the waiver request is concerned, out of the $25,000, close to $13,000 of that is rental waivers, and $12,000 is for services such as audiovisual, electrical, miscellaneous setting up of chairs, tables, and so on. The reason that that needs to be included in the waiver is to balance out our accounting forms, it's just paper balancing, and to provide Dunn with the actual figures of what it is costing them to put up an event, we need to be able to record those events. Those charges are not going to be levied against Dunn at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Laban's, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Very good, Mr. Zine, you know, but what you really should do is go to Water and Power and say, get the water for free. Get the water for free, Greg. Because I think it's, and I, and thank you, Sparklets, and thank you, Arrowhead, for everything that they do, but we have a great municipality called the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, and I believe that they should be bottling their water and providing it. But furthermore, Dennis, you bring up a very good point, because I've been doing research on this issue, because I went to a concert at a county facility in my district, and then a concert at a city facility in my district, and I've been to the convention center, and I've been to the airport. Do any of you feel disappointed that, hold up that one bottle, Dennis, what was $4? Now, what if you were from, let's say, Pennsylvania, Dennis, and you were an engineer, you were just here for the big engineering convention that they had, and they charged you $4? What would you think about Los Angeles?
Ripoff.
You know, and I think that's something that we should look at. I see, I wasn't, I wasn't going to bring this up, too, our Assistant General Manager spoke of the convention center, but I think it's a challenge, and even in my district, the situation related to the zoo, some of the prices that are there, I think there should be a grade in it. So I'm going to ask Avok, I'm going to ask Avok to do a motion to look at this, and Councilmember Parks, are you pleased with all the prices that they charge at the Coliseum? For, you know, I mean, to look at what's fair is what I'm saying, to not be gougers, if that's a term that you use, right, Mr. Zine? Did you use that term? So I think, I just wanted to thank you, but I also want to thank you for bringing light on the Department of Neighborhoods, to bring their budget down from $64,000 to $8,000, and making a way to host the people properly. But I think we do got to ask ourselves, because I know it's not pleasant that you go there, they charge $4, I bought four, I bought a bottle of water, I forget where I was, the Bowl or the Greek Theater or somewhere, and I could have bought six bottles and still had a buck in my pocket, and I saw something's wrong with, that leaves a bad taste in my mouth, and I didn't even drink the water yet. Thank you.
Must have been Pink's hot dogs.
No, no, now don't say anything about Pink's.
No, no, that it was a good price. Janice Hahn.
Thank you, Art Grace. Mr. Chair, members, I just want to thank Dennis Zine for watching out for taxpayer dollars here in Los Angeles. And that was a great visual to take that bottle of very chic, chic, hoochie-coochie Perrier water and say, even that, one, how much did you pay for that?
$1.19.
$1.19 for that is cheaper than what we were getting charged for regular water in a plastic bottle. So I really want to thank you for that. And while I'm glad we have reduced the cost of this seminar, of this conference that's going to be held Saturday, it's really because of Dennis Zine, who brought it to our attention, who brought it to both of yours' attention. And I guess I would just say today, I want to encourage you, Greg, and all general managers of the city of Los Angeles, to continually look for ways that we can reduce the cost to the taxpayers of Los Angeles, so that we're not getting ripped off, particularly in our own buildings. And as you said, it's the taxpayers who are holding that debt and are responsible for that debt of that building. So really want to thank you for doing that, but want to encourage all of you to continue, just not to take things for granted, not continue to take prices that are given us as the gospel, but look a little bit further, look a little bit deeper, and always remember, particularly in these tough times where we're going to be asking city employees to not take their raises, and those of us who are considering not taking our raises, let's make sure that we really are watching the purse for the taxpayers every single way we can. So thank you, Dennis, for being that watchdog on this committee, and good luck for a very successful conference tomorrow at the convention center.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Zine, for a second time.
I just wanted to close by saying that we give exclusive contracts to different vendors, whether it's a...
whether it's at the Convention Center, or LAX, or any other city operations. And they have an exclusive contract, which they're making a lot of money. And it would seem that the departments, I know the mayor met with all the General Managers a few days ago, and from my reading the paper, informed them about the cost cutting that has to take place. I think we need to look at the vendors that we do business with, with the different departments. And when we're doing something on behalf of the people of Los Angeles, for the taxpayers of people of Los Angeles, such as what Dunn is doing, which the charter mandates that be done, we make sure that we're getting the wholesale price, because we know there's the wholesale and there's the retail. And when we're paying above retail, there's something wrong. So I don't know the discussions that took place, other than the fact that the mayor didn't meet with the General Managers. We definitely have some hard economic times. The people who are working in this building, for me and my colleagues, they're not going to be receiving what they anticipated, a cost of living increase. I, as well as many of my colleagues, aren't going to accept that. And when we're tightening the belt, and these vendors with the exclusive contracts are gouging us and the taxpayers, that's wrong. We need to examine that also. If we go to the auto show at the Convention Center, and general public is purchasing a product, and they want to have a different rate for that, and I understand you've now got a government rate when we do activities there, we should have really done this a long time ago. I'm glad we're doing it now, but every single dollar turns into millions of dollars. We can't pave the streets, and we can't hire more police officers, and we can't do what we need to do. We've really got to look at that bottom line. So I thank you for getting involved, and I did receive a call from your General Manager shortly after the meeting that we had, Neighborhoods and Schools, saying, "We're going to get this done quickly, because we know we got, we can't tolerate it." But there's a lot of other departments out there that are paying higher than retail, and we need to come down to the fact, if they're going to do business with us and the taxpayers' dollars, they got to give us a wholesale rate, if nothing less. Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. We will give you a new nickname, Aquaman. We have two, we have a substitute motion before us. Ms. Perry, was it your intention to move the substitute motion? We need a motion for that? Okay, we have a second for that, Mr. Zine? Seconds? All right, we can open the roll on item, close the roll and tabulate the vote?
Thirteen ayes.
That item is approved. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
This is a time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay. Now it's time for public comment. We have some speaker cards. First, Robert Myers, I'd like to invite you back, to be followed by Glenn Doris Boone and Jim McQuiston. These are the first three speakers. Please, Mr. Myers.
Yes, my name is Robert Myers. This is pertaining to Jan Perry and Mr. Veragosa. Don Garz is my really good friend in downtown, and he told me to come before the city council to talk about the centralized services down in downtown Los Angeles. Some of them are just hilarious. For instance, the new women's shelter. They have so many problems with their transportation systems. People are being left behind purposely by the shelter. One day, for instance, I went over there to get on the bus, and I was denied for no reason to get on the bus. So I had to sleep on the street that night. And so this shows with, with all these, like I reiterated earlier, with all these fee waivers and with the mounting budget crisis in the city, centralized services are not being given, and the shelters in the Skid Row area, a lot of people do not like going to those shelters because they force religion onto you. And not only do they not like to go there, it's because when you go into line to get a card for the bed, they give you a card, and then they tell you there's no beds. So you wind up sleeping on the sidewalk that night. There's not enough services downtown for all the people to utilize. The shelters are not coming to pick you up on time to take you, because they no longer take walk-ins as their conditions to move into their new facilities. Also, I was very upset about a comment that was made by Mr. Veragosa that said, "We would not come to city council to defend our civil rights." That really made, that really ticked me off. That is not an appropriate comment. I've been a advocate for the homeless and youth for the past three years, with CYC, California Youth Connections, discounting my first year with them as a legislative aide. I do not believe that this, that this needs to be taken care of by this council. They need to act, they need to open up more centralized services downtown to stop the problems. And with that anti-urination ordinance, I don't know if I, about any of you guys, but if you guys would go down there and use those stalls yourself, I wouldn't, it's enchymated, I wouldn't put a rat in those stalls to use the restroom. They use it for prostitution, they use it for cocaine, they do all kinds of stuff. The other day, I was sitting by one of those stalls, and somebody fired a gun. It's not, it's not safe down there to use those restrooms, they're disgusting, they're on, they don't, they don't, they don't keep up to par on the health standards that have been set forth. It's just disgusting. And so I asked this council to, to either put new facilities in there and to put more patrol up in that area, so people can feel safe to use the restroom besides going on the sidewalk, because they don't feel safe walking down there on Crocker to use the restroom. It's just disgusting. And, and so I asked for more centralized, this council, to act on the centralized services to solve the problem of the homelessness downtown.
Thank you very much for your comments, we appreciate them. Glorius, sorry, Glenn Doris Boone, to be followed by Jim McQuiston.
Thanks to the council for allowing me to be here this morning.
Could you move the microphone, ma'am, down so that we can hear you? Thank you so much.
Thanks to the council for allowing me to be here this, this morning, this morning and afternoon. I'm here because I'm about to lose a 30-unit bill, and I have no business to lose. Mr. Marcus Adams, Attorney of Law, he is calling himself the LA House in Renaissance, and he is the only part of that Renaissance. I wonder if anyone here knows him? I would like you to please stop his actions. I have $1.2 million sitting in Burbank, in the Commonwealth esque, that he is not allowing me to get this house fixed. 30-unit apartment building at 417 Country Club Drive, it's in the District of Mr. Ludlow, and I live in the District of Mr. Parks. I need help. Mr. Adams has really, he, he has just about ruined my life. He's had me in the court at 50, the 50, the, over in 111 Hill Street in Division 50, about, of course, he calls me a sum house, house owner, but I have fixed many things there. The building is already half-done, and he is demanding that I lose this $1.2 million to go back to, to the California mortgage in one of the northern cities. And, and that money will go back very soon unless Mr. Adams take out his less payments against me. He has no right to put a less payments against me, he does, I don't even know who he is. If anyone here knows Attorney Marcus Adams, I wish they would bring him into council. He doesn't, he's not a city employee, he's not employed by anybody I know, he's his own representative, and he is, he has a whole list of people, such as Chase Manhattan and Washington Mutual and many other people. I have a list here of those he's still working with. I have not done anything to this man. He seems to be against me, he names out what I have, and that he wants to make me a bad person that I'm not.
Ma'am, if I can ask you to conclude, I know Mr. Ludlow's staff is available to talk to you over here, so if you would like to follow that up, we'll make sure that we get on that case. And we appreciate your testimony.
I would like, I would please like to know, sir, what can be done about Mr. Marcus Adams? He's had me in that court at 111-
That's what we're, that's what we're going to figure out right now, but I have to call the next speaker, because your time is up.
What, what is his portion in the city? Does the city pay him? He was once employed by the City of Los Angeles, but as far as I know, he's no longer employed by the city.
Here's, here's a deputy from, from the council office. I have to, your time is expired, ma'am, so I'm going to ask you to, to speak with her. And we thank you for coming in. I'd like to call forward Jim McQuiston now.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. Over and over again now, this tangled web that we've made of neighborhood councils is getting us more and more involved in things that we shouldn't be involved in, and keeping those people from helping us run this city. One of the problems is structural. The ordinance that enabled neighborhood councils does not agree with the charter language. We have fought this when the ordinance was before the council in the first place, and that city council didn't realize that neighborhood councils were going to be a great help in this city. Now this neighbor, this council certainly realizes, and our budget deficit now really makes it very, very important to enlist all these volunteers. If the city council takes up that prior ordinance and corrects it, we're going to have a great hand clap from the neighborhood councils. We're losing already six major presidents of neighborhood councils. We're talking about neighborhood councils that want to disband already, because they're getting upset with the bureaucracy. We have to get back to what the charter envisioned for neighborhood councils quickly, and it's up to this city council to revise that enabling ordinance, to make it clear that neighborhood councils are on the side of the city, and we want to get that done as quickly as possible.
Thank you very much, Mr. McQuiston. I'd still like to call forward Elizabeth McClellan for a little special recognition. Welcome to City Hall, and thank you very much for your patience.
Good morning, City Council members. I am so wonderful to be here this morning, and I feel so extraordinary, because we are extraordinary in neighborhood council. I'm from the Southeast Neighborhood Development Council, and I happen to have about four neighborhood representatives here, district. Councilwoman Parks, member, Councilmember Jan Perry, and Councilmember Hahn. And of course, President Padilla is not in here, but that's my personal councilman. I am the only constituent in Los Angeles, I think, who has a personal councilman, and that's President Padilla. I want to read something to Councilwoman Hahn that we came down here especially to say. This is not just a note of appreciation, this isn't just an ordinary thank you card, it's given as a special token of appreciation. This card is filled with endless thanks and gratitude, and it holds the same good feelings that you gave to me. You made me feel cared about, and that is one of the most important feelings in the world. You gave of yourself and your time and interest, and I want you to know that I will always remember your kindness. You are one of the special people who goes out of their way for others, and I am grateful that you were there for me. As I forestated, our council district overlaps three districts, District CD9, CD8, and CD15. Well, it happened that the empowerment congress got itself all tangled up with another council member, I'm a council, neighborhood council in our area, over a meeting place. We just got tangled up, it was not serious. We misconstrued how we were supposed to handle a shared resource, and we, and we needed some, some professional help and some council member help. And so we came and asked Councilman, Councilwoman Hahn, because she chairs the Education and Neighborhood Council Committee, and she was there for us. We like to, to present to you
This plant.
Thank that, it's so sweet. Thank you so much. That's so sweet. Well, I've already been advised by the city attorney that it's okay for me to accept this plant, and so I accept it with gratitude. But you know, I did come to the commission meeting the other night to stand up for a neighborhood council, to use a shared resource in the city, the Mark Ridley Thomas Constituent Center, which was the right thing to do. But before I came in that meeting, I did call Councilman Parks on the phone, because as I was going into his area, I wanted to make sure that we were in agreement with me, and he told me, "Janice, I want them to meet in the Mark Ridley Thomas Constituent Service Center. I think it's a shared resource, and that makes sense for all neighborhood councils," as, as Councilman Parks said. Eventually, they're all going to be meeting together as they deal with regional issues. So it makes sense that they can meet in a shared facility and share ideas and share resources. So you have a lot of council members here who are, were on your side on that, but thank you for the beautiful plant. God bless neighborhood councils.
I would like to conclude by saying, this is Ms. Lula Bishop, who is a member of our council. This is our secretary, Ms. Jack, Jackette, Priscilla Jackette. Ms. Bishop is a business lady in our community, and she has said that she's going to take the neighborhood councils that was all tangled up with, over a small issue, to breakfast. So maybe we invite our council members also.
We'll make Bernard pay for it.
Thank you, to Councilmember Parks.
Thank you so much for that kind presentation, and we're very glad to have you in City Hall today. Thanks so much. That, colleagues, ends our public comment period for today. Take up the next order of business, Madam.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those motions are posted and referred.
Council has excuses on the desk. Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused Wednesday, November 19th, for personal business, that meets council policy.
Okay. Councilmember Weiss is excused.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused Friday, December 5th, for city business, that also meets council policy.
Councilmember Perry is excused as well.
And Councilmember LeBonge requests to be excused Friday, November 5th, to arrive at 10:45 for city business, that meets council policy.
All right, Councilmember LeBonge, you're excused until 10:45.
And that clears the desk.
Okay. Colleagues, any announcements? Mr. LeBonge.
Happy Halloween to everybody, and I wanted to, anyone who is listening today, if you have children, a nice treat, but you should go early, right at 5 o'clock, is the Los Angeles Live Steamers in Griffith Park, that's just east of Travel Town, has a wonderful railroad ride and a haunted railroad, a great colorful experience there. It's a free-for-everyone. So tonight, if you would like to start off your trick-or-treat night, come at 5 o'clock. They are asking for donations for the American Red Cross and United Way Relief Fund for victims of the fire tragedies throughout Southern California, but your children would enjoy it, as I said, the Los Angeles Live Steamers, tonight, 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Zoo Drive, just coming from the valley, get off at Forest Lawn Drive and go left by Travel Town, coming from Los Angeles proper, central Los Angeles, get off at Griffith Park and come around past the zoo to, to the Live Steamers. Thank you, Mr. Carsetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. LeBonge. So there are announcements, colleagues. Ms. Perry, Mr., oh, Ms. Perry, Mr. Smith, and then Mr. Parks.
I just wanted to announce, a pancake breakfast will be served on November the 8th, Saturday, at 42nd and Central, at the Central Avenue Farmer's Market, from 9:00 a.m. till 11:00 a.m., $5. And this, the proceeds of this will go to the Ralph Punch Youth Leadership Academy, and the breakfast will be prepared by representatives of the Los Angeles Fire Department and the Los Angeles Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. In, in view of the great holiday, Halloween, just want to announce there's a number of safe locations within the 12th District that citizens can bring their children to and feel totally safe to participate in, and they are the Cheshworth Recreation Center, Mason Recreation Center, Northridge Recreation Center, and Granada Hills Recreation Center, all which has special programs from 4 till 8 o'clock. The Encino Community Center, Winnetka Recreation Center from 5 to 8, and the North Valley, excuse me, Mid Valley Regional Library from 4 to 5, and also my council district office on Northridge on the corner of Nordoff and Wilbur, which is open all day until 4 o'clock. Please bring, bring your children by, we'd be happy to provide them a safe Halloween.
Mr. Parks, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Veragosa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have three announcements. One, this evening at 7:00 p.m., Crenshaw High, our only LA Unified School District, high school in the 8th District, will be playing their first game in their history under the lights, and they'll be playing against Locke High School, 7:00 p.m. at Crenshaw High. Also, for USC fans, playing against Washington State tomorrow at 4:00 p.m., number three-ranked Trojans, 80,000 people expected at the Coliseum, which we think is the home of NFL football in the near future. So that's another one. And then the third one is on Monday, November the 3rd. California Hospital is having a free flu shot drive, in which particularly for senior citizens, we're going to have 200 senior citizens bused from the 8th District to California Hospital. It starts at noon on Monday. It's an issue, over 18,000 seniors die annually in the United States due to the flu, and many of you met my 100-year-grand, year-old grandmother, she'll be a participant in that program on Monday. So hopefully, all that are interested will come by California Hospital, get a free flu shot for seniors.
Thank you for that announcement, especially the one about USC. Turn it over to Bruin, Mr. Reyes.
Yes, I'd like to speak more to a, a local neighborhood event. In Lincoln Heights, we have this grand old city jail. The Boys and Girls Club, the Los Angeles Boys and Girls Club is putting together a haunted house at 401 Avenue- a haunted house at four oh one Avenue nineteen, starts at five o'clock. It's a great place to visit for Halloween, and it's a great historic site. Come on, come on. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Villarosa.
Yes, for those of you who are concerned about some of the safety around Halloween, we have Dia de los Muertos, and at El Pueblo, Alvera's, historically known as Alvera Street, we'll have two days of celebrating the Day of the Dead, on Saturday and Sunday, and also on Saturday, on the Sixth Street Bridge, we're closing down the bridge, and we're gonna have a Festival de la Gente, so gives people an operative, which is a festival of the people. Gives us all an opportunity to celebrate this period of Halloween and Day of the Dead in a more, in a safe and cultural, culturally relevant way for the fourteenth council of Atlantic District.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zion, and then back to Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, thank you, for your indulgence. Tonight at the Topanga, Westfield Shopping Town, on Topanga, north of the one oh one freeway, from six to eight, they're gonna have candy for all the trick or treaters in the shopping town, and at seven o'clock, there's a contest, a Halloween costume contest, and I will be the judge, to see who's gonna win the prizes that we have tonight. That's tonight, Topanga Canyon, north of the one oh one, Westfield Shopping Town. Also on Sunday, we're also gonna have Dia de los Muertos on Sherman Way. We're closing down Sherman Way in the Main Street, Canoga Park area, and we're gonna have an event take place there, this is the third annual Dia de los Muertos for the third district out in the west San Fernando Valley, so everyone's welcome, we'll have a lot of activities, that is this coming Sunday, so you've got two venues. I will be going in costume. Kids don't be scared, tonight and Sunday. Dia de los Muertos is a celebration, it's not a morbid situation, it's a celebration, and it's a wonderful event, we're doing it with the local church, LA the Valley, Father Alden, and the wonderful people from Canoga Park, so we welcome everyone to come out this Sunday, and it starts around ten A M., and a lot of activity. So tonight and Sunday, and come from Glassell Park to the San Fernando Valley.
And kids don't be scared, that's Mr. Zion in his reserve officer uniform.
There you go.
Mr. Labange.
Yeah, Mr. President, Mr. Parks, in the newspaper it announced today that all LA Unified Athletic Games are postponed to either tomorrow or Monday, so I don't know if that affects Locke and Crenshaw, but they put them off, so I don't know. I know my homecoming between Eagle Rock and Marshall is put off to Monday, but.
We'll check on that.
Yeah.
We didn't know that.
And Janice, did you wanna say something?
I did, I just wanted to say, I feel compelled to say, a little cross-town rivalry, Councilwoman Parks, of course Locke High School is in my district, and I for one will be rooting for the Saints, and if you'd like to, you know, have a friendly wager on that.
If you don't mind being beat down, we'll take you to the best restaurant in the eighth district if you should win.
Okay, and I'll take you to the best restaurant in fifteenth district.
Papa Doc's.
All right. And Mr. Garcetti, when Mr. Reyes spoke of his event that he has at the old Lincoln Heights Jail, I forgot to mention it, it stuck my memory, this Sunday, and Antonio, you wanna hear this too, this Sunday, between two and four, a great constituent of the fourth district is gonna be in the thirteenth district, the great Phil Stern, the photographer, eighty-four-year-old photographer, who was part of Darby's Rangers in World War Two, is a classic Hollywood photographer, is having his book signing, Phil Stern, A Life's Work. And he took historic pictures of the fellas coming out of the city jail in Lincoln Heights of the Sleepy Lagoon, that is one of his many pictures that he's taken. I'm gonna have him here next Friday.
Where's he gonna be on Sunday?
It's gonna be at the Arc Light, at the old Cinerama Dome, and with that, after the signing between two and four, because he has such a great relationship with James Dean, at four o'clock, get ready, Rebel Without a Cause is gonna be shown there at the Arc Light. So it's a great Sunday afternoon to spend in Hollywood in the thirteenth district, just north of the fourth district, to see a man who's been in all our districts, Phil Stern, a life's work, a great photographer. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Of course, there's no formal event, but we know that tens of thousands of people will be on Hollywood Boulevard, of course. We are trying to crack down this year on silly string, which goes right into our storm drains and clogs up our storm drain system and out to the ocean, so please, we ask people who are coming to Hollywood Boulevard to please avoid buying and or using silly string this year, and there will be public toilets this year, and parking to try to make things more accommodating for the businesses there, as well as enjoyable for the community, so we know we'll see many of you there on Hollywood Boulevard tonight. Okay, can I ask everybody please to rise for adjourning motions? Colleagues, any adjourning motions? Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Members, ask that we join in memory of Walter Edward Washington, the first elected mayor of the nation's capital since the Civil War, and the first African American to head a major U.S. city. I mean, died Monday at age eighty-eight, the great grandson of a slave, he had been appointed mayor-commissioner to head District of Columbia by President Lyndon Johnson in nineteen sixty-seven. If you think about joining, getting in charge of a city, what the nightmare that you would have, in his first five months, he, the assassination of Dr. King took place, caused the city of Washington to explode, and Washington remembered that the former director of the FBI, Edgar Hoover, had asked him to shoot the looters. And the mayor is known for his slogan that he imposed, the policy, don't shoot the looter. Eventually, President Nixon reappointed Washington twice, and then when Congress approved home rule for the district, he ran for mayor in nineteen seventy-four, and became the first elected mayor in a hundred four years in Washington, D.C. He started as an intern at the National Capitol Housing Authority, and left in nineteen sixty-six, and it's interesting to note that when he left office, was defeated by Marion Barry, but when he left office nineteen seventy-eight, the city had a forty million dollar budget surplus. He's married, was married to Benetta Belik in nineteen forty-one, she died in ninety-one, and in nineteen ninety-four, he remarried to Mary Burke, who survives him. So we ask the members, we adjourn in his memory.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. Mr. Labange.
So I ask that we adjourn in memory of Angela Easton. Angela Easton was a member of the Getty House Foundation, and she served on various city commissions, a professional in every sense of the word, who had great commitment to help other people. She was truly known as a doer, as someone who made things happen in every involvement. She was a great friend of Nancy and Richard Reardon, and just last spring, she purchased her first home in Silver Lake. She has services tomorrow, which is All Saints' Day, at our Motherhood Council Catholic Church on Vermont and Las Feliz, in the Las Feliz District. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Angela Easton, who passed away peacefully Wednesday, died from tragic breast cancer. Angela Easton.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Mr. Parks.
Mr. Chair, I have the four adjourning motions. One, for all fight fans, boxing trainer Bill Slaton, who was the manager for two world heavyweight champions, Ken Norton and Michael Doakes. Also, in the city of Los Angeles, ran the Broadway Gym on South Los Angeles, recently was named the Manager of the Year in nineteen seventy-seven, and also received a lifetime achievement award by the Golden State Boxers Association. Funeral will be at Angeles Funeral Home, Thursday, November the sixth, at ten thirty. Also, a person that was part of the LA city family for a number of years, Ms. Anne Smith, her mother passed away, Verna Clara Shelton Smith, passed away at eighty-one years of age, October twenty-third. Services will be held in, let's see, in Maryland, and so, we did that one, okay. Next one is Mr. Eighth District resident Alberta Johnson, born July twelfth in Brookhaven, Mississippi, passed away at age eighty-nine on Sunday, October twenty-fifth. She was a charter member of the Mount Carmel Senior Citizen Club in nineteen ninety, was involved in a variety of activities. Her funeral will be held in Inglewood at the Greater New Bethel Church, eleven A M. Tuesday, November fourth. And then the final one is a young man that I coached Pop Warner football, Michael Daryl Stennis, whose family created the Golden Bird Restaurant. Michael passed away at the age of forty-five on October twenty-sixth. He was responsible for bringing Golden Bird Restaurant chain to national prominence, recognized by Black Enterprise Magazine as one of the top one hundred businesses in the country. He played several years at Baldwin Hills Youth Football, where he was a star quarterback for seven years. Also played at Palisades High School for three years, and then later, for three years, at the University of Hawaii, where he was their fifteenth ranked career pastor. He was a strong supporter of the community, and recently, he was appointed as the president of Magic Johnson's Foundation, where he focused on scholarships, HIV awareness, prevention, technology, and education. In ninety-four, Governor Pete Wilson appointed him to Board of Trustees, California State University, where he served on the board in a leadership capacity on a variety of committees. He received an honorary doctorate at Cal State University, Monterey Bay. In November two oh one, he was diagnosed with cancer. He immediately directed his energies to community service, where he formed the Stennis Family Foundation, to educate African American community about the early warning signs of cancer. He will be truly missed, his funeral services are Monday, November third, at the First AME Church, he leaves his wife Erin and three children, Michael Junior, Todd, and his young daughter, Pilar.
Thank you. A second from Ms. Perry on that. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ask the council to adjourn the name of Victoria Horn Oki. Mrs. Oki, as she was known in Northridge, was the wife of comedian Jack Oki, and she was very involved in the community, she died at the age of ninety-one, after living in Northridge for sixty years. Mrs. Oki was very involved in philanthropic activities, most notably that she also appeared in sixty-two movies, and wrote five books during her own career. As Mrs. Oki's, Jack Oki's wife, they owned the Oki Mansion, and she donated the mansion to the University of Southern California two years ago, and the university is now discussing the donation of the Jack Oki Mansion, which is a historical monument to the city of Los Angeles for potential cultural fairs and art center in Northridge. They also endowed a chair at the University of Southern California in comedy, and also performed a number of comedy lectures at the Academy Arts and Sciences. Mrs. Jack Oki was a wonderful lady who was well-liked in the community, and she passed away at ninety-one. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Mr. Zion.
Chair and colleagues, request we adjourn in memory of Ralph Farren, passed away October seventeenth. Ralph was born September twenty-seventh, nineteen twenty-four, in Minnesota. He was a resident of the San Fernando Valley for fifty-four years. Ralph was an alternate for the Woodland Hills Warner Center Neighborhood Council, member of CPAB, Neighborhood Watch, on the Board of the Interfaith Council, also involved in Little League, Girl Scouts, and Cub Scouts while his children were growing up. Tomorrow, the San Fernando Valley Symphony at Pierce College will be dedicating their evening concert in memory of Ralph Farren. Ralph and his wife Pat were married for fifty-five years. They were both keynoters for the San Fernando Valley Symphony. Ralph was loved by his family, friends, neighbors, and will be greatly missed. He is survived by his wife Pat, five children, and five grandchildren. May Ralph Farren rest in peace.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zion. Also, colleagues, ask that we adjourn today in memory of Garrett Harden, who died actually September fourteenth. Mr. Harden was a seminal ecologist of his day, he taught at UC Santa Barbara for over thirty years. In nineteen sixty-eight, he wrote for Science Magazine, The Tragedy of the Commons, which kind of changed everybody's outlook on human behavior and the environment, and looked at the nineteenth century, how many villages in Europe lost their livestock because too many of them grazed on the common ground, and using that metaphor, really pushed forward the world's thinking about what we are doing with our own common green space. He was somebody who authored more than twenty-seven books, hundreds of articles, lived in Santa Barbara. He died at his own hands, his wife Jane was eighty-one, died with him, she had Lou Gehrig's disease, and he had a heart disorder, and they were longtime members of End of Life Choices, formerly with the Hemlock Society. They took their lives on September fourteenth. He confounded many of his critics with all sorts of other positions he took throughout his career, such as that we shouldn't aid folks in Ethiopia during the famine, because that would just lead to overpopulation, so he was certainly a controversial figure, but I think he'll be remembered by all for the tragedy of the commons, which really changed not just a country's, but a world's thinking about the environment. So in his memory, I ask that we adjourn. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you, colleagues, happy Halloween, and this meeting is adjourned.